Cynthia, you ready for us? Okay, good evening, everyone. The time is 5:30 PM. It is Tuesday, May 27th. I'm going to call this special city council meeting to order. Would the city secretary please call the roll?
Mitchell?
Here.
Heiser. Rizzo. Zuniga. Harris?
Here.
McKinney?
Here.
Tobias?
Present.
All right, four members present. We have a quorum. Next up is citizen comments. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward and speak? Seeing none, I'm going to close citizen comments. Citizen comments is now closed. Next up is executive session. The city council will now go into executive session to discuss Agenda Items 1A through H pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.071, 551.072, and 551.087. Thank you. 7:07 PM. It is Tuesday, May 27th, and I'm going to call this regular... I'm sorry, actually. There was no action taken during executive session. There will be no action taken now. Motion adjourned. All right, we are adjourned. Good evening, everyone. The time is 7:07 PM. It is Tuesday, May 27th, and I'm going to call this regularly scheduled city council meeting to order. Would all please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the city secretary please call the roll?
Mitchell?
Here.
Heiser?
Here.
Rizzo?
Present.
Zuniga?
Present.
Harris?
Here.
McKinney?
Here.
Tobias?
Present.
All right, all members are present. We have a quorum. Next up is approval of the minutes.
Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion, please, to consider approval of the city council minutes for May 6, 2025, special meeting and the regular meetings for that day, May 6, 2025.
Second.
All right, motion by Councilmember Tobias, second by Councilmember Rizzo, that we approve the minutes as described is the discussion on that motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion carries 7 to 0. Next up is citizen comments period. At this time, we ask anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak on any item to please do so. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes and that you direct those comments to mayor and council. We also ask that you fill out a citizen comments form and submit that to either myself or the city secretary. I have three that have registered to speak. First up is Paul Hill.
Sorry, I didn't see if there was a timer.
There we go.
Good evening, Kyle City Council. My name is Paul Hill, and I am a resident of Kyle. Pride Month starts in just a few days, and I'm here to express my disappointment that there will be no Pride Market Days this year. There was one last year. It was a well-attended event, and I was there and I had a great time. It probably is no surprise to any of you that I'm a gay man, but it has been a surprise to me over the last year, the way that our allies have stood silent or walked away from us as the national and local environment has gotten worse for LGBT people. Last year, I was very proud when city council, despite disgusting comments from public comment and also from a former member of city council, Councilmember Parsley, who said that pride is just about celebrating who we have sex with, and wondered why there was no straight pride. Well, I want to tell you what pride means to me. I grew up not knowing if I would be able to marry the person that I loved, if I could even be out. I was scared, and I was lonely. I was told things like I was demon-possessed, like I would never be able to have a career if I was out. I was told that I was just doing this to get attention or that I have a death wish. LGBT people are bullied, harassed, jailed, and killed. They are kicked out, disowned, and pushed to the mental health break by an onslaught of government activity targeted at us. Pride is not a celebration of who we have sexes, sex with. Pride is a celebration of the fact that we are still here and we're going nowhere. I want to take you back to June 26th of 2015. That's the day that marriage equality became the law of the land. I went directly to Fourth Street in Austin, which is the gay area in Austin, and there's a celebration there that I'll never forget. And it was not a celebration of sex but of love. It was a celebration of the fact that we got to love who we are and we got to love others. Right now, 10 years afterwards, things are scary. Companies are walking away from us, governments are walking away from us or actively harming us. Pride-themed events and products are disappearing, and LGBT folks are left to fend for ourselves. But this doesn't make me any less gay, doesn't make my trans friends any less trans, and we are not going anywhere, and that's what pride is about. I encourage you to change course. Allyship is not about convenience. Allyship is about doing the right thing, even when it's not convenient, even when there's political pressure not to do so. I was so proud of this council last year when you stepped up for us, and I'm disappointed that it's not happening again this year. So I encourage you to change your minds and have another pride event, especially because there are many other market days that celebrate other groups and causes. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up is Nancy Fahey.
Hi, my name's Nancy Fahey, and I live in Steepwood Chase. I'm here to talk about Item 21 regarding the changes to the Ethics Code, the amendments. It seems that the Ethics Code was initiated or whatever by different cities, as Kyle, to allow the citizens to file a complaint, that they could feel open and free to file a complaint without being criticized or ridiculed. And I understand that legal sufficiency should be in the code, but it needs to be defined, clearly defined, as to what is considered legally sufficient for an ethics complaint in Kyle. Some might not know, some know, but you can do something that's ethical that's illegal, just as you can do something that's legal that's unethical. And there's a difference, and we can't lump them together. And the code kind of reads as if it's legal. It's not, it's ethical. Big difference. So it seems that... Well, anyway. Okay, secondly, the meeting agenda, this meeting agenda was misleading, as the Ethics Commission did not recommend that the ethics attorney review all complaints for sufficiency prior to giving them to the Ethics Commission. That's something that occurred by the current ethics attorney. I don't know where she got the idea to do it, but she dismissed four of them without us even seeing it, and I don't think that's right. It might be that we would have, the Ethics Commission would have dismissed, but it wasn't her job. She overstepped. And so I don't believe that's really necessary if it's outlined what legal sufficiency is in the code. The Ethics Commission can do that. We don't need an outside attorney doing it. I don't know what she charges or if she charges by the case, I don't know, but it's an expense that the city doesn't have to take. Let me see. Oh, yeah. Having that where an outside lawyer looks at the complaints and it's stated that way and the public knows that four of them have already been dismissed, I think it is like complaint, ethics complaint suppression in that people don't want to be ridiculed, they don't want to be embarrassed, they want to just file their complaint as they see it. And they maybe need to be guided through it, but they shouldn't be just summarily dismissed. So let me see. And I think the city needs to strive to include citizens in decision-making and to listen to them when they make comments. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. All right, next up is Yvonne Flores-Kale.
Good evening. My name is Yvonne Flores-Kale. The first thing I want to discuss is the market days with the progress, the dialogue for peace and progress. I don't think it's a good makeup. I don't think it's going to benefit or even withhold what the dialogue was meant to produce. I think it's going to be difficult for people to get up there and talk when you have people shopping on the inside. So if you guys could try to separate that, I think that would be a plus to the community. Recently, the Ethics Commission made a unanimous decision to pause dismissals to await a third-party attorney's opinion before allowing the ethics attorney to continue dismissing complaints. This move by the commission shows a commitment to ensure that complaints are treated fairly and thoroughly, rather than being swept under the rug. However, I believe the city and its leadership are counting on residents not watching these meetings. Is it really the cost? I don't think so. The city spent millions on real estate that currently sits unused. So what exactly are city attorney Amy Alcorn-Reed and city manager Brian Langley trying to cover it up? Is it the ethically questionable makeup of the city's Ethics Committee? A council member nominating a friend to oversee the actions of the very person who nominated them seems like a blatant conflict of interest to me. Or perhaps it's the affair between a council member and an assistant city manager, an affair confirmed not only by the spouse of one of the parties but also by multiple sitting council members. These are only two examples of the ethics complaints that have been dismissed by our city's ethics compliance officer. When city attorney Amy Alcorn-Reed sponsored this item and city manager Brian Langley placed it on the agenda, they directly contradicted what the Ethics Commission has already decided. By doing so, they underestimated the people's vigilance and demand for accountability. As we fight for our voices to be heard for the council healthcare, we can also fight to have a voice in our city's ethics process. In the words of President Jimmy Carter, "The strength of a nation derives from the integrity of home." Our community's integrity begins with the leaders, and as tax-paying residents, it is our responsibility to fulfill it.
Good evening, members of council.
Hang on, I want to make sure that you get recorded. So are we back on? Okay, go ahead.
Is this on? Can y'all hear me? Good evening, members of council. Once again, I'm here to speak about an issue having to do with ethics. Here we go again. It's item number 21, first reading to consider approval of an ordinance amending the city's Code of Ethics based on the recommendations of the Ethics Committee on May 7, 2025. This is regarding dismissals of legally insufficient complaints by the ECO Ethics Compliance Officer versus the Ethics Commission. The commission voted to await an evaluation from independent legal counsel on the interpretation of the Ethics Code and recommended to the city council that the Ethics Code provisions be clarified. Has the legal opinion been received? If so, would you please reveal it to the public? Section 2275 of the Ethics Code is so very clear, it doesn't even need clarification. Complaints and responses should be forwarded to the Ethics Commission. That's why they're there. On 4/29/2025, I spoke at an Ethics Commission hearing, meeting about this issue, as did other citizens. Sarah Kerr, who was the ECO there, dismissed four ethics complaints filed by residents within one month citing her authority as the ECO pursuant to a portion of the Ethics Code. Her letter stated the following. "I'm exercising my authority as an ECO pursuant to Ethics Code Section 2275B6 to dismiss your complaint as legally insufficient. The reasons for the dismissal are stated below." She had no authority to dismiss complaints. The Ethics Code stated that she will issue advisory opinions as well as recommend acceptance or rejection of complaints. The portion she's using as authority to dismiss the complaint actually reads "review complaints for legal sufficiency." She recommended you dismiss Councilmember Zuniga's complaint. The commission chose to review the complaint and to hold a hearing. Sarah should have offered her opinion and/or recommendation to the commission versus acting as the entire commission to be determined whether the complaint's valid or would be dismissed. The city is denying citizens their due process. It's not up to Sarah or any other ECO. That's why we have an Ethics Commission. To remedy this situation, instead of reining in the abusive power by Sarah, they're asking the Ethics Commission is asking to approve an ordinance amending the Ethics Code to allow the ECO to increase their power instead of advising and recommending to the commission. I urge the council to take the time to really look at this ordinance and discuss it before voting on it. Please don't rush it through. I'd also advise the council to remember, this could cause any ethics complaint any of you submit to never make it to the commission. I'd also like to know when the complaint against Councilmembers Zuniga will be heard and why it hasn't been scheduled. And about another subject, the roundabouts, the roundabout first policy, I wish you guys would take a look at that and determine if you need to change the policy. The policy shouldn't state any land we can acquire, anywhere we can acquire. Carmel, Indiana planned their roundabouts before they planned their communities, and so we're taking away all these people's lands, slivers here, and upsetting people with the traffic issues. So please take a look at that policy again and update it. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Next up is Michael McDonald.
Good evening. I'm here to speak out against any changes that amend the city Code of Ethics. We already have an ordinance in place that has worked just fine for years. Why are we changing it? Why fix something that isn't broke? Do not add the phrase "legally sufficient" to Section 2-275B because of Commissioner's proposal. All ethics complaints should be reviewed by the Ethics Commission and considered eligible complaints. That is what they are charged to do. They make the determination and should judge each complaint, not the ethics compliant officer. What does legally sufficient actually mean? Each one, you can interpret it differently. So if you each can interpret it differently, then that means we can have 17,000 different interpretations and everyone thinks that this is how it's supposed to be. That needs to be clarified. The job of the ethics compliance officer is to provide counsel to the Ethics Commission. In other words, they are the help that provides legal opinions to the Ethics Commission so that they can make decisions on each ethics complaint. The ethics compliant officer is not the judge and should not be treated as such. Words matter. When you change the structure of a sentence by changing a word or phrase, you can change the whole meaning of a sentence to read differently than what it originally was proposed to say. What is the true definition of the phrase "legally sufficient"? What does it really mean? I believe if this phrase is inserted into the Ethics Code, it will be used to toss out valid and eligible ethics complaints because of misleading interpretations. Do not add that phrase to any sentence in the city Code of Ethics. If you allow the ethics compliant officer to be the sole judge of every and all ethics compliance that the Ethics Commission receives, then you are lowering the threshold what the Ethics Committee is from, is, from judge to rubber stamp and the ethics compliant officer from help to judge. By not allowing every ethics complaint to be judged by the Ethics Commission, you are silencing the voices of dissent, the voices of whistleblowers, the voices of the citizens of Kyle. Please do not allow any changes to the city Code of Ethics that minimize the input of each citizen. Thank you.
All right, thank you. That is all the citizen comments forms I have. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward and speak? Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Sarah Anken. I'm a resident of Kyle, and I'm coming tonight to speak about Agenda Item 3. In our daily lives, in our homes, we all have to make hard choices about how we spend our money. And for example, I would really like to go on a vacation this summer with my best friend. We could go Habsies, but even though it would be good for my mental health, when I look at my bank account, when I look at my foreseen upcoming expenses, I have to say no. I can't do it. I have to maintain a financial cushion in my account for emergencies, and I think there's a lot of people in the community in Texas who share that approach to stewarding our resources. So I was dismayed when I looked at the presentation for Item 3, and I saw that the recommendation was to fast-track the issuance of the COs, the certificates of obligation, rather than to maybe have a discussion about should those issuances still happen and at what rate? It was to just push everything forward to get before this hypothetical deadline of a bill that's working its way through the Texas House right now. So I felt like they were trying to recommend we secure funding before it's too late, just rush in there without really thinking about what the consequences are for the city or for residents. So looking at the presentation, I feel it doesn't adequately address what those risks are to the taxpayers should more COs be needed after that big issuance that they're suggesting for August of 2025. I think a lot of us find the tax burden in Hayes County already to be challenging, and the current plan for the COs, as well as the proposed plan as outlined in the item, further increase that tax burden on us. And I understand there's a voter approval tax rate. It's above board, you can do that, but I just ask you, just because you can doesn't mean that you should. So think about if more is needed after we do that initial issuance in August, what happens to us? How are we supposed to pay for that? So in conclusion, I like green spaces. I think that they are important for human well-being. I am a fierce lover of animals. I think our road should be safe. I think our road should be well-maintained. But yeah, I'm not criticizing the desire to have these things that we're wanting to issue COs for, but I am suggesting restraint, the same restraint that I have to exercise in my daily life. And I urge you to ask for a more thorough analysis of what the risks are for the city, what the impact would be for taxpayers if we were to move forward with issuing COs right now versus reconsidering them. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? All right, seeing none, we're going to close. Citizen comments is now closed. All right, sorry, actually, we're going to take a moment of privilege. Councilmember Zuniga, go ahead.
Thank you, mayor and council. I'd just like to show support for San Marcos and Hayes County community, family, brothers and sisters affected by the tragic loss of Andrew Farias, a 2025 San Marcos graduate who lost his life at a graduation party early Sunday evening. He was a mentor to his younger siblings and his younger cousins. He was scheduled to start Texas State University in August to study construction engineering. In his San Marcos Rattler Football Facebook page, they put a few notes there that said, "In loving memory of Andrew Farias, forever part of our team, the game may end, but the legends live on." So with that, we are all one community, and I'd just like to take a moment of silence.
All right, thank you. Next up is going to be Agenda Order. Does anybody have any items that they wish to move around? We do have a certain request on Agenda Item 16, which is the districting item. I'd like to go ahead and bring that one up pretty close to the front because we have a man who had a surgery and needs to be off his leg, but who's been carrying us all this way. Does anybody have any other items they wish to move around? Councilmember Tobias?
Mayor, I know it's, this is, 21 has been brought up before. We should also consider on having the discussion early. We have some people here and online that are watching. We can move that up as well, right after yours.
Does anybody have any objections to that?
Item number 21. Thank you.
All right, any other items? All right, next up is Agenda Item Number 3. Receiver report, hold discussion, provide staff direction regarding the pending legislative action which may impact the city's planned issuance of certificates of obligation for tax-supported capital improvement projects. Mr. McClain slash Ms. Libby.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmember Stephanie Libby with Norton Rose Fulbright. We serve as the city's bond council. I'm going to deviate a little bit from tonight's presentation and start with kind of the rationale for the proposal that's before you all and to let you know that based on current legislation, bills that are still alive and bills that have passed and are on the governor's desk waiting for his signature to become effective, we believe that the discretion that we were seeking from you all tonight is no longer needed, and the recommendation would be for the city to proceed with the original plan of finance. So the certificates of obligations as originally proposed would be what we bring before council when we come back next week with the notice of intent for the certificates of obligations. And just to give you a little bit of background, there were bills that were pending which would change state law effective September 1, 2025, which would impact some of the projects that are in the current certificate of obligation issuance. And I'll move to that slide. Or not. There we go. So as originally envisioned... Oh, sorry. Okay. As originally envisioned, Kensington Park would be funded over a three-year time period. The proposed animal shelter would also be funded over a three-year time period. Then we also had intersection improvements and other park improvements included in the planned CO issuance. The change of law that was proposed under some of the pending legislation would effectively leave those projects abandoned or without a future funding mechanism identified. So you would have an issuance of obligations to begin a project, but you wouldn't have certainty in the future about the ability to issue additional obligations to bring those projects to completion. And so the city's financial advisor had worked through bond structurings for both the certificates of obligations and the street bonds that would have allowed the city to fund those projects in its totality so that the projects would not become effectively abandoned if there were a change of law without having a tax rate impact on the city. Because these, again, these issuances are built into the capital plan to fully fund the projects. So that was the original intent behind tonight's presentation, was to put the city in the best place moving forward to fully fund these projects. But as I kind of led the presentation, state saying, based on where we are today in the legislative session, bills that are still pending and can be passed and bills that have already passed, we don't anticipate that any similar provisions or changes of law would occur between now and the end of session that would have the same impact of leaving those projects in an abandoned state. So happy to answer any questions that you all may have. I hope I provided a little bit of context related to the purpose behind the presentation tonight and what staff, bond council, and the city's financial advisor were intended to achieve.
Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Libby? All right, thank you. Appreciate it. All right, next up, we're going to move to Agenda Item Number 16. First reading, consider approval of an ordinance approving the redistricting of the city's single-member district councils, city council districts, and establishing new district boundary lines for Kyle City Council elections for city council places 2, 4, and 6 based on the 2020 census data. Ms. Alcorn-Reed.
Good evening, mayor and council. Amy Alcorn-Reed, city attorney. For the record, I have with me Kabi Caputo with Bickerstaff. The purpose of this item is to essentially approve the proposed district boundaries for future single-member districts, for the three existing single-member districts. for future single, uh, single member districts for the three existing single member districts. These are the current voting districts, I believe. This is what they look like now. We have looked at over the past few months, a couple of different options. This one is Plan A. It was designed by Mr. Caputo and his staff or his firm, I guess. And then this is Plan B. This was the, the redrawing after the city council workshop. The options that I have are to approve the ordinance and adopt Plan A, or approve the ordinance and adopt Plan B, or request Bickerstaff come back with a third map option, which would push this to another date. I recommend approval of either A or B based on council's determination.
All right. Does anybody have any comments or thoughts on this item? I know everybody probably does.
Yeah.
Rizzo, you go first.
Councilor Rizzo.
All right. So I guess my concerns were, first of all, I know that we did, we're doing this late and it should have been done a long time ago, right after the census. And seeing some of the discussion on that Saturday morning, seeing that we were talking about retail, we were talking about the growth, where were we at? I was a little uncomfortable about following that direction. I think we should be doing the census completely, even though we're behind on doing it from when the census was doing. I, I know that COVID played a big part of the census that we probably didn't get accurate numbers as well. There's a lot of factors involved, but I, I just, just kind of feel that we need to really focus more on the census. Conversation should be more on the census when we do something like this, redistricting, even though the numbers are not going to be where we're going to be at. It's great. I was, I was a little concerned on District Four, when you look over at Stagecoach and see how it, it staggers in and out up to Stagecoach Road, that's kind of concerning. I think the people in that area would probably not have a real voice if, off of Pump House Road and that. If we went with this map, I'd love to see that line go back and allow Pump House Road and that to be in District Two, all the area there in the future. But it just, honestly, it kind of looks like the hand of District Four is coming to grab District Two right there. If you look at right at Stagecoach Road, it's kind of what is concerning to me. And it just looks like those three fingers just reaching out to grab us. And it just, it just bothers me. I mean, just, I just, I just kind of feel like those people need to be really represented in that area. And I think if we put them in District Four, they might not have a voice. And that's kind of a concern for me. And really, the conversation should be about the census. It, it should never be about retail, should never be about projected growth. It should always be on the last census. We're going to have to do this again in four years, so understand that when the other census comes in. So that's kind of what my concerns are. And I'm just, I, I just feel like District Four right there is kind of in Coaching District Two, where it probably would be later. So I'd love to see that change.
Additional thoughts, Councilor Tobias.
Yes, sir. Okay, over the weekend, I started to dissect again, just to look at it for like the fifth or sixth time already, the difference between Plan A and Plan B. I know if you go with Plan A, we're kind of sticking to mostly the same format, especially but when you get up to the marketplace area. Now, I know if you go with Plan B, you're, you're basically, I wouldn't want to say taken away from District Six, you're expanding out District Four to Marketplace and also to Physicians Way and a little bit more further down. But on the, overall, I think the, the reason why this was brought forward was to see where our representation lied. So if you look at the, the numbers that you gave us from the census population all the way down to the census for the voting age population, it seems that Plan B is going to be, when it comes to the voting, you're going to have more of neighborhoods for District Six. In that sense there, when you also have additional voting population in District Four. And in District Two, you would have more of the businesses. So it's kind of a, a give and take kind of deal that I looked at because, you know, unfortunately, I'm on my final term because I'll be termed out after this series here. So I'm looking for when the next District Six member comes on board, where their representation lies on that end. And as you go up more north, northeast, you'll see that there'll be some development up there. But I understand Councilor Rizzo's concerns because yes, we are behind on the game on this. We, we, we are moving the, the numbers around as far as representation. And there was a couple of residents that said that District Four would look like it'd be more of a powerhouse if you look at the outlining of the entire area versus District Two and Six. But again, most of that area is still undeveloped for right now. So we've got to kind of focus on the representation, not only from the business and the retail side, but for the residents themselves. So I guess my question is, is the difference between Map A and Map B when it comes to the voting, sir? Is there a large significance of, of population that would be represented Hispanic, Black versus the white population in, in District Four?
If we're taking District Four in isolation.
Yes.
I mean, the numbers are very close.
They are really.
Hispanic voting age population in Plan B in District Four is 35.84%. In Plan A, it's 36.49, so it's less than a percentage difference. That's one of the unique things that came out as we redrew the plan based on the council's discussion is even moving the lines around like you did, it really didn't change the, the demographics of, of the plans that much. Plan, or District Four in the, the Plan B picked up about 114 more people. That's all. But in terms of racial breakout, ethnic breakout, the numbers are very similar all the way across and they're, they're very similar to your current boundaries, which of course are way out of balance. So it's a kind of a unique situation where we were able to bring you back into balance and yet not really change much in terms of the, the voting age population, the total population and the demographics of those people.
So when I look at the VAP, which is the voting age population, we're looking at, we have 33,000 registered voters in the city of Kyle?
I don't know if you have that many registered voters. That's how many voting age people are in the census.
That'll be eligible to vote, correct?
Yes, that's how many people, according to the census, were over 18 on the census in 2020. That number's obviously changed.
That's 33,000 people that are eligible to vote. So when we have numbers of elections that are under the 5,000 mark, that tells you. So that, that tells you right there, people, that, that we have that many people in the city of Kyle that are eligible to vote, 33,000. So when we have elections, whether it's bond or, or city or mayor, that's, that's where the key is. So, but that's good to see because we need to be able to see that right now at a current state. And again, this is 2020 numbers. We are five years in from this. So we need to be able to hopefully in the next, where do we see the census starting to, to start gaining ground, like in year three from now, like in 2020, 28, we're going to start seeing some chatter as far as getting the census going for 2030?
What they, what they do is they, they ask all cities to confirm their geographic boundaries for them, starting at about two, three years out. They don't actually start counting until into, in this case, it'll be 2030, so five years.
Okay.
And then, you know, there are efforts by the census and they ask cities to participate in encouraging people to participate in the census and, you know, be sure and fill it out and send it in. But yeah, in terms of actually going around counting people, sending out the mailers and things like that, that really doesn't start until 2030, which is weird to say.
Okay. So they'll be able to get accurate numbers around that time because like Councilor Rizzo had just mentioned, brought up a good point, we are behind in the game, but we are going to be looking at having to do this again within the next four years, was it, or three years?
It'll be, well, five. I mean, we're 2025, it'll be 2030. So yeah.
Okay.
And hopefully it'll be a better one this time.
Yes. That's all I have here. I yield. Thank you.
Additional comments? Motions?
Question. Both of the maps satisfy the population census date. That's why you carved them out this way?
Yes, they're both under the 10% deviation, which is allowed by the Constitution.
And in Plan B, just to the council, I remember some of us who were here, we were designing, we're trying to make all the districts have an invested interest in the downtown and in the, the growth of every district in terms of the retail. I do like Plan B because it does, you know, the steeplechase areas, you know, in Plan A, it belongs in District Six, but many residents, they, they assume that they're in, that it's a District Two is their representative. So that, that was, that was one of the reasons why I had favored Plan B. I thought that it was more equal in every council member now has, you know, a stronger vested interest in building up the city for the best retail and housing that we can find. So I still like Plan B. I, it's, it's just a little tweaks over Plan A, but, you know, willing to do what the, the majority is looking at here.
Councilor, Mayor Protem.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve option two ordinance, approve the ordinance and adopt the Plan B map.
Second.
All right, motion by Mayor Protem, seconded by Councilor Harris that we approve agenda item number 16 with a direction to move forward with Plan B, option two. Is there discussion on that motion? Councilor Zier.
Yeah, I just want, I heard some comments talking about retail again. This should just be on the census, nothing else. When you're doing the redistrict map, it should just be on census. No other factor should play a factor in that. It should just be census as what keeps the voter role perfect and fair.
Okay. Anyone else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Nay.
All right. Motion carries six to one. All right, thank you very much. Next up will be agenda item 21. First reading, consider approval of an ordinance emitting chapter two, article four of the city's code of ordinances to adopt amendments to the city's code of ethics based on the recommendation of the Ethics Commission on May 7, 2025. Ms. Alcorn Reed.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Amy Alcorn Reed, City Attorney for the Record. The purpose of this item is to discuss an amendment that was proposed by the Ethics Commission on May 7, 2025 to the Ethics, to the Code of Ethics. The proposed amendment would include the terms legally sufficient prior to complaint so that only legally sufficient complaints are forwarded to the Ethics Commission. I did suggest some other language as well in addition to what the Ethics Commission suggested, just to, just for clarity, to ensure that that entire provision revolved around that change. I'm happy to discuss any amendments you might have to my language or to the proposals.
Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Alcorn Reed?
Yes.
Councilor Tobias.
Thank you. And I know this is very sensitive, so I want to make this, just keep it very professional and just open minded and open reading on this. So you're saying that this was brought forward by the Ethics Commission?
Yes.
The majority of the commission people on there voted to have this?
On May 7, Commissioners Sanford made a motion to, one, await the third party legal opinion on the pending complaints, and two, to recommend a city council to clarify this section based on a recommendation made by Commissioner Hill, which was to add the words legally sufficient before the word complaints. Based on that motion, I brought this item forward.
Okay.
And that was approved unanimously, although only five of the commissioners were present.
Okay. So when I'm looking at this and I'm just trying to read it, maybe I'm putting it in specific words here, this is, "The purpose of the amendment was to clarify the rights and responsibility of the ethics compliance officer. By determining whether or not a complaint is legally sufficient," and if we go to the term legally sufficient, refers to the adequacy of evidence, pleadings, and actions to meet the required legal standards of various contexts. So that's what that means there. Go back to my email. And so again, by determining whether or not a complaint is legal or sufficient, the proposed ordinance amends a section two, two seven five to provide that the ethics compliance officer will only transmit legal sufficient complaints to the Ethics Commission. It is suggested that this charge will clearly authorize the ethics compliance officer that, and see, and correct me if I'm wrong, that they have the right and can dispose of complaints that are not legally sufficient without first forwarding the complaint to the commission.
Yes, that was my understanding of what the commission wanted. It was that they wanted to only review the ones that were legally sufficient.
That were only legally sufficient, okay. So I guess my, going to, my original question would be, is how will the compliance officer, what would be the, number one, the official process be to investigate any complaint or legal or not? What type of legal research would this compliance officer need to add to get the information from? The sources to judge if it's legal or illegal complaints would be made public? And also, how would council be notified about these complaints? Would we be notified if a, let's say an ethics complaint is filed on me? I'm just going to go and just use me for an example. Somebody says, "I don't like the way Councilman Tobias uses his words," or "I don't like the color of his ties." And they file a complaint on me. Do I get notified, will I get notified right off the bat? Or they have to notify to see if there's anything that I did legally or not legally? And then it has to, you'd have to determine that and then go, then before it goes to the commission, versus the commission receiving it first and then going back to you to see if there's any legal grounds? It seems like it goes to you first before it goes to the commission.
Based on the way that this change was written, and I'm not saying that this is the only way to change it or even the best way to change it, the way it would be written is since we did not change two dash two seven four, when the complaint is filed, it would get transmitted by the city secretary to the ethics compliance officer and to the respondent. So if a complaint's filed against you, you would be notified immediately. And you would have 14 days to respond. When it's sent to the ethics compliance officer, the ethics compliance officer would then review for legal sufficiency. And if it's determined that it's not legally sufficient, she would inform the city secretary that it's not legally sufficient and not send it off to the commission. And then the city secretary would inform you as the respondent that that complaint was disposed of as not legally sufficient.
Okay. I guess it, it goes into the conversation that some of the public has been brought up, that it would probably, that kind of procedure could maybe turn people away, or if there's somebody that may see something. And again, it could be council members or it could be city employees, correct? It could go that route?
So let, let's use the example of your tie. If someone complained about your tie, and we're considering whether or not that's legally sufficient, we have to assume that all the facts in that complaint are true. So we assume that your ties are just hideous and everybody in the world hates them and it's terrible that you wear them.
Offensive or whatever.
We have to assume that that's true. But even if that's true, that is not a violation of the Ethics Code. And that's, that's legally sufficient. If we assume that what's in the complaint is true and it's not a violation of the Ethics Code, even if everything in there is true, it cannot be legally sufficient because it can't stand a violation of the Ethics Code.
Okay. So it has to be on legal grounds versus ethic and moral and all that other grounds? I guess that's kind of where we're, we're looking at, but you got to have the evidence to, to show for it, correct?
You have to be able to thoroughly allege a violation. You have to allege the facts that would be sufficient to be a violation. I look at it kind of like the way you would look at a summary judgment motion in a civil case. Summary judgment motion, you assume that all of the facts that are presented are true. And if they're all true, and that doesn't allege a valid claim, then the case would not, would not be allowed to continue.
Okay. That, that's what I have there. Okay, thank you. I yield, Mayor. Thank you, sir.
Councilor Harris.
According to our current ordinance, all complaints are forwarded to the commission, right?
Yes, according to our current ordinance, the, the way it's written, the complaints are forwarded to the commission. However, I don't disagree with the interpretation of B six that the ethics compliance officer is currently charged with reviewing for legal sufficiency.
Yeah, but it could still be forwarded to the commission even if the ethics officer says that it does not seem to be sufficient.
I think that's the clarity we're trying to have.
Yeah. I thought so. The ordinance clearly states what needs to go into the complaint and how it's to be signed. And to me, that's very clear. I realize if that is not there, then the complaint needs to be returned, perhaps just by the city secretary, but returned for completion rather than just being turned away.
So that's, that's currently in the code that if it's not properly sworn, it is returned by the city secretary. We don't want the city secretary to make judgments on whether or not the complaint states a valid violation of the code.
Right, no, you don't. And that's my point. I don't, I don't think we want the, anyone other than the commission stating whether that complaint has validity before they've heard it. And I understand some of the And I understand some of the reasons behind us wanting to change this particular ordinance, but I think that the commission should be hearing those complaints. That's their job. It's their privilege to hear those. So I, I would be opposed to changing the ordinance.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councillor Zuniga.
I'd have to agree with, uh, Councilmember Dr. Laura Lee. Yeah, this is, uh, a bit problematic because if we, if this ordinance passes, it actually enables bad actors that are in office to misuse and abuse potentially, um, their position. So, how? Because there's less safeguards for people to transmit complaints because now there would be an ethics attorney who would use her own discretion to, um, decide whether this bar of legal sufficiency is met by the complainant. And this would be, um, open to interpretation. It'd be subjective, and it takes away the ability of the sworn Ethics Commission to review all those complaints. Now, just because an attorney says there's no legal sufficiency here, that does not prove that there was not some ethics violations. And I think that you would be missing some clues or even evidence by not having it forwarded to a strong panel of Ethics Commission officers who are able to decide for themselves, uh, using their own reasoning whether there's been a violation. So, um, straight dismissal is actually very troubling because it does not build any trust or confidence for our residents or community members to be able to feel confident that they're able to trip, forward some type of ethics complaint. So...
I have a couple of notes on that.
I also don't even know that this would be legal because our ethics ordinance clearly states that ethics complaints have to be, um, that's why we elected an ethics commission, to do that job. You also were seeking an ethics open, what, sorry, an opinion about whether an ethics attorney could dismiss, um, unilaterally. Uh, did you ever get the response back?
I'm still awaiting that opinion. I'm hoping to have it soon. I don't have it yet.
Mm-hmm.
The way, the way I understood the vote of the Ethics Commission was that they wanted that opinion so that they would know whether or not to go back and consider the previous complaints that were dismissed by the ethics attorney, and that the commission then recommended making this change moving forward. I do have a couple of notes on your questions about allowing the ethics attorney to dismiss complaints, and one of them is that it would not prohibit the person from refiling the same complaint.
Okay.
It would give the person the opportunity, just like you would in a court case, to restate their complaint and include facts sufficient to allege the violation, while not having this Board of Volunteers appear to review a complaint that does not state a violation. There aren't enough facts to state a violation, and so we're asking people to come. So it would give them the opportunity to refile.
I got that. But the, the issue here, though, is that, uh, legal sufficiency starts to give the appearance of having to prove something, uh, possibly illegal or criminal, and that's not what we, what we're doing here. Ethic, this is ethics, this is violations that, uh, someone was unprofessional. So someone has, uh, a right to file complaint on any elected member. They could file them on me, you know, that's fine. I know that's what I signed up for. But what I do want to point out to is that there's already a clause in filing ethics complaints that they, they should not be frivolous. So if you are intentionally filing something frivolous, you're already at penalty for doing that. So I don't think anyone would be doing that just to have, um, a, a good time and, um, you know, with this process, because you have to prove the code, you have to address the code, and so there's not a reason why someone would just, uh, create...
That's really what legal sufficiency is asking them to do, is to establish a violation of the Code.
Right, so we really don't need this, this ordinance because it, it, the Ethics Code already has enough robustness in there that it prohibits any types of, um, bad, bad faith attempts. Well, so, so I don't understand the point of this because it's not making it harder for, for bad actors to, 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 uh, stop what they're doing. This is just actually making it easier for, uh, bad deals to be done by elected members. So what we really need is you as the attorney to bring forward ethics ordinances that will improve upon penalizing, um, bad actors. And, and this does not do that. This actually makes it easier, uh, in my view, in my opinion, because now you're just straight out dismissing any complaint, uh, because someone doesn't know that it meet legal sufficiency, and then it's kept behind closed doors, so no one, no one, no one sees whether that was really a cover-up.
Just a couple of notes to that. Once it's dismissed, it's public, so it actually does not remain behind closed doors because it's been dismissed, it's now public. And two, again, when it's dismissed, the attorney will provide information as to why it was dismissed and allow the person to then refile. So it gives them more information that they might need to help them refile it as well, and it would get refiled and then would be accepted if they refile it in a way that adequately states a violation of the Ethics Code. The idea being if someone filed a complaint saying that Councilman Tobias's ties were terrible, then now we're putting Councilman Tobias in a position where he has to defend himself for wearing terrible ties, but that's not a violation of the Ethics Code.
Right, but legal sufficiency can be not in the jurisdiction, not, um, you know, didn't, didn't file it properly. These are like things that dismiss where you take a lot of time and energy to document the facts, gather the data, and then send a complaint just to have some third-party person say, "Not enough there, not in the jurisdiction," which everything that we vote on here, like, transverses all types of jurisdictions. So, so I've seen that argument made. I've seen arguments that are so weak that...
The Ethics Commission has very specific jurisdiction, that's correct, and that's something that we could amend when we're looking to amend the code. Currently, it has very specific jurisdiction.
Right. But my, my, my issue with that is that it's gonna be very loose of, this is charter violation, this is ethics violation, picking and choosing which ones they actually want to, to see. So that's not, that's not the way I would like to see this, our government running or leadership running.
That sounds like you want to change the jurisdiction in the code, and that's something we can look at in the future, if that's what you want.
Well, I don't want to do anything that, that weakens, uh, things that are valid from moving forward, uh, because I don't want to break integrity of, and so I see that happening by approving this type of ordinance.
I understand too.
Mayor Protem.
Yeah, so, I, I truly do not understand how you think that if an independent attorney who has no connection to not, a single one of us up here...
They're paid, they're paid by the city, Mr. Heiser.
If they are going to dismiss a complaint based on the, based on the fact that it doesn't, uh, it doesn't commit a violation per our Ethics Code, how that enables people up here to commit crimes or violations? That makes literally zero sense. It protects the board, the Ethics Commission, from wasting its time because something doesn't meet the level of a violation. So, in, in essence, I think the way that it is now actually affords the opportunity for people to file frivolous complaints and waste the time of an attorney and the commission because they don't meet the, the, the bar of an actual violation, which we have seen happen thus far to this point. So y- y- you're saying a bunch of things that, like, hold zero water whatsoever, and we just saw it play out in front of us, and I'm not even talking about you. I mean, what you said here tonight, but previously...
But if you think about this, though, Mr. Heiser, the ethics attorney is hired by a agency that the city is paying.
Sure.
So why would someone compromise a financial, you know, um, benefit by not holding people accountable who make decisions that are, that they're, cut off their paycheck, basically, right?
Sure. The people in the crowd who are making that same argument as you are also saying that the Ethics Commission is biased because we appoint them. So what do you say to that? Wha- what, two, what's the point there?
I think all complaints should be looked at.
Then why have it at all? Let's just send it straight to the AG, someone who knows none of us.
Well, we should call the AG.
Okay. All right. I think we're getting off track. You don't mind if I could just interact, in it, just...
Hang on, we're gonna, we're gonna go to Councilmember McKinney.
Okay, McKinney, go ahead.
I sincerely hope that I speak for all of us when I say that nobody wants a sincere ethics violation to squeak through the cracks. It's my understanding that the question is, who is most qualified to determine whether there is a, a, an ethic, an actual ethics violation based on our written-out Ethics Code? And I, I have to defer to a, a paid attorney expert's opinion over, you know, the appointed residents. I, I feel like the, the qualification of an attorney is, when it comes down to what is a violation, what is not a violation, it has to carry a little more weight than anybody who's never spent a day, you know, looking over legal documents. Not, you know, w- we're blessed to have several members of our Ethics Committee who have a legal background, um, but that may not always be the case. And I'm just trying to think, long-term, big picture, who do I want making that call? So, you know, I want to see every ethics violation get to the commission, but I also want to make sure that they're not being dragged down by a whole bunch of just frivolous statements. Uh, an accusation is not a violation. You actually have to have evidence to go with that. And if there's not enough evidence, we don't need to waste some appointees, not, not elected people's time.
So...
I yield.
If, if I could just interact for just two minutes. Okay, so when it comes to that, maybe it's something that we need to consider when it comes to the Ethics Commission itself. Do we need to go ahead and continue appointing individuals, or do we need to open up to a board and commission process like we do with everything else?
So that is in the Charter, Councilman Tobias.
Okay.
The Charter Review Commission has discussed it. They're currently recommending leaving it the same way that it is, but it is something we can discuss when we come back with the Charter Review. I know a couple of residents have suggested that they don't like the way that we appoint the commission. Because it's in the Charter, we cannot change it at the council level.
Yep. So there's that policy, the process there, because it's, who's in my district, who's in my area? Maybe we need to look at that, say, we need to grow up and move on from that process there. Second thing would be, again, I know we're kind of in the situation to where we, we've had gone through some ethics, uh, issues with some of the members here on Dais, but I'm looking at this long-term, guys. I'm looking at this as the next mayor's, as the next future council members. How can we go with that process? A- and, uh, I kinda maybe not agree with you, uh, Councilman Heiser, about the bringing people together, the commission together and wasting their time. That's what they're appointed for. That's what they're there for. That's why they chose to accept the nominee to go through those processes. If it, if it means that if there is a ethics violation or a possible violation, uh, I think they should be notified to say, "Hey, look, we got a complaint about Councilmember Tobias about X, Y, and Z. This is what it is. Maybe you forward it through." Maybe they don't have to meet, but you get them an official notice that there has been a complaint to be on the horizon for that, and then you do your diligence on that end to justify, was there, uh, a moral issue that went along with it? Was there an ethics violation? Was this person seen rude or unprofessional in public? Or were they posting something on social media that was, uh, you know, kind of offensive and so forth? Uh, second thing would be, were they possibly doing any kind of civil or illegal acts or whatever it is? And where's the evidence that you have to show for it? But I think going back to where we have to still inform the commission that there was a complaint filed, I think just notifying them, and then if we needed, if there, a meeting was to be called, then there's that process there. But I, I, I kinda see where you're getting at as far as you want to make sure that the complaint, the person that comes to your desk and comes to your office and files a complaint, number one, do you see that person in person? And you have to have it notarized, correct?
So it is currently required to be notarized. It is not required to be notarized in the City Secretary's office, so they can get it notarized somewhere else.
Okay, so they can get it notarized somewhere else.
With the City Secretary in a notarized form.
Okay. So if that compliance officer receives that, and I'm just trying to understand the process on how it would go. They would receive that complaint, they then contact the person directly to get more information? Or just look at it and, and dismiss it? And then when it gets open, number three, when it gets open to the public, is it publicly posted somewhere to where residents can review it?
So currently, I'm gonna start with the last question because I remember that one most clearly in my head.
Yep.
Currently, once it's dismissed, the dismissal is posted on the city's website. The complaint itself is not, however, if somebody were to request it through PIA, they would receive any part of it that's not otherwise confidential by law. So for example, if it has, uh, employee's phone number in it, that phone number is gonna get redacted, that sort of thing.
Address and all that stuff, okay.
Right.
Okay.
Or if there's, you know, someone has attached a confidential email to the back, that email will get sent off to the Attorney General, that sort of thing. And then I think, I'm trying to kind of interpret your brain here.
Mm-hmm.
I think you're looking at more like a hybrid method where the commission is still informed, but the ethics compliance officer would then still do the analysis as to whether or not the complaint was sufficient and just tell the commission it was not.
Mm-hmm.
And then maybe, I'm not sure if this is where you're going, maybe the idea is that if a commissioner disagreed, they could require a meeting, because the commission can't act without a meeting.
Yeah.
And under the current code, if only the commission can dismiss complaints, we have to hold a meeting, and we have to hold a meeting within ninety days.
Yep.
Period.
Kind of like an IA investigation.
So you're, it's, it sounds like your idea is to do a hybrid. The attorney gets to decide, but the commission can potentially appeal or make a complaint.
Yeah, to be notified, "Hey, you're getting a, I got a notice to all six members, received them a notice about, uh, an ethics complaint filed this date, so forth. Uh, details of this is, again, confidentiality, however you word it. And just to give you an idea of where it's at and so forth, we do find significant grounds to hold a hearing or a meeting, uh, on that end, and then they can then review it and then ma- decide if it needs to go further on that end. Because you're still involving the public, you're still letting people know that, hey, there was a board member or council member or city staff, whatever it was, that had a grievance that was filed on them, but it's more transparent. Because again, then it also shows for that person that's being filed on, that is being open out in the public and, and, and to that, do any kind of scrutiny. Because again, people get attacked on social media all the time.
I do think this is a balance that maybe is difficult for people who don't live and breathe in our daily lives to see. There's a balance between ensuring that all complaints can be filed and heard, and also ensuring that we're not putting our employees and our officials in a position where they have to defend themselves against something that, that isn't a violation.
True.
Where you have to get up and say, like, "No, my ties are great, I love them," even though that's not a violation of the Ethics Code.
Yeah. Okay. But I strongly probably will suggest if the commission's out there watching to maybe look at the possibility of, of, uh, looking at changing the Ethics, uh, Commission Board process to, uh, going to the boards and commission selection process versus appointing.
We had a really good conversation about that at the Charter Review Commission.
Thank you. I think we've, uh...
A meeting again next week.
It's time to graduate from all that.
Again.
Yep.
Councillor Rizzo.
Well, lots to digest. One of the things I want to start off is addressing some of the comments that were out here. Uh, Councillor Zuniga brought up a point. What does happen to somebody that files complaint after complaint, complaint, and there's no merit behind them? What is the consequence? Because Councillor Zuniga said there was a consequence to that.
We don't really have a vexatious complaint. Part of our ordinance is something we could look into adding. What we have is a frivolous complaint. So if, when a complaint is filed, the commission determines that that complaint is frivolous, then the person gets called up to basically defend themselves and argue that it's not. And I believe there are potentially some sanctions attached, but I have to go look at the ordinance to remember exactly what's in there. I think what you're looking for is more of a vexatious. So if you have a habit of constantly filing complaints, and those complaints are often found to be frivolous by the commission, then perhaps there would be a possibility of making a change to the ordinance in the future that would prohibit you from filing complaints for a certain period of time, or require the complaints to be precleared by some body or some person, something like that. But that's not in our ordinance right now, so it would be considered on a complaint-by-complaint basis.
Honestly, when, when this was first brought to the city, it's probably the best of intentions is having this in there to keep all the electeds and, and have that, um, power to be able to keep them accountable, right? I think the best of intentions were in here. Unfortunately, people misuse the best of intentions sometimes, and I think that's why we're here, where we're at right now. I, I think this was something that our early leader said, "You know what? We're gonna keep council accountable, and it's just a great thing to do, keep council accountable. Let's keep everybody accountable." But when you misuse something, that's, that's where we get into that fine line where we've But when you misuse something, that's, that's where we get into that fine line where we've got to fix the problem, right? I mean, it's, it's sad that something that's so good gets misused sometimes. And what we need to continue to do is improve that. And I'm like, really, it should be on oneself. File something that has, has merit. If there's really a complaint out there, get it done. I mean, I, I'm all for that. If somebody's doing something wrong, let's do it. But to assume that everybody up here is doing something wrong, I take offense to that. I do this because I want to serve my city. I do this because I've been serving the city for 30 years. I've been serving in different capacities, in different charities. I really take offense to somebody saying that we're doing bad things because, look, I could be doing something else.
That's the picture you want to paint?
No, 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 no.
I'm not assuming that about you. So don't paint that picture.
No, that's what you said right now. You said that.
Hang on, you can't go one-on-one. Just keep, keep it making statements.
I don't want to debate you.
So what I'm saying is, I'm here to serve and that's it. I mean, if I do something wrong, yeah, file a complaint on me. If there's proof, yeah, file a complaint on me. But I can promise you, I'm not doing anything wrong. I'm just wanting a role of service. And that's all I'm doing up here. When, if I don't get reelected, I'm okay with that. I can go on and I can volunteer somewhere else in the city. I mean, I've, I've always had that, but that, that just kind of vexes me right now. When I heard that, I was like, yeah, just, I'm, I do what's best for the voters. And one of the things I, I'm, I want to talk about is, I, I, I'm glad, I'm glad that they put this in early on in our city. Unfortunately, it's being misused sometimes and it, it's tough. I mean, and I'm, I'm with Councilman Tobias. We definitely think, I think we need to change the election process for the board. When, I mean, I'm going to be honest, I'm going to be honest up here, because I'm not going to make votes for my next election. I'm making votes that are better for our citizens. And one of the things I'm, I'm thinking about is when I, when I saw the process that played out a few weeks ago and to see a commissioner being manipulated, I mean, I'm, I'm sitting here going, what's going on here? I mean, it's, it's crazy to see that. And what I want to say is maybe we need to find a process that's better than this. Maybe there's something that's even better. When somebody's suggesting the AG's office, maybe that is better. I mean, because sometimes people that are serving can have, can be there for the wrong reasons. I mean, that's something I, I'm kind of looking at right now. When I'm sitting back and looking at everything, it's kind of out there. You know, I'm just wondering what, what can we do to fix this? And I really don't know. I don't have an idea. Maybe the AG's office is the best way to do it. I don't know. But do we need checks and balances? That's important. But it's, it's just tough because, you know, something good being misused is always a bad thing. And that's where I'm, I guess, that's what kind of I've been seeing over the last couple of months, is something that was good is now a bad thing. And that's, that's sad to see it go that way. I'm just, yeah, I'm, I'm, I guess I'm just, it's, it's just getting to me. I'm sorry.
I have a, I have a couple of things. So number one is, I think I, I understand the desire of the council to want to make sure that there's a, a great deal of transparency allowed in the Ethics Commission complaint process. I do, though, fundamentally support the idea of making sure that complaints, that the only complaints that can be heard have to meet a minimum threshold of being legally sufficient. As far as I can tell, legally sufficient is not a judgment on the merits of the case or whether it's, you know, accurate or not. It's simply saying that if you want to make the claim that someone committed murder or theft or in any number of things, I don't like you because you slept with someone or whatever the accusations are, that there has to be some way of tying it specifically to the ethics ordinance, which is a policy that governs our jurisdictions in a limited capacity. So I think we've had something like 18 complaints filed. Not all of them meet that threshold. And I'm, I would, I would feel very nervous about the, the commission being, feeling like the, that they're compelled to go through and investigate things that aren't, that they know from the outset aren't even a, a, a possible violation because it's in the wrong jurisdiction. Maybe it needs to go to the FBI. Maybe it needs to go to the, the AG. Maybe it needs to go somewhere else other than the Ethics Commission. And then also, maybe it does need to go to the Ethics Commission. But there's a, should be a threshold allowed for that that's somewhat objective and not just based on, you know, whether or not the, you know, how the group is feeling on a particular day. So I, I, I think that requiring that a legal sufficiency standard makes all the sense in the world to me. So I'm happy to support that, because I do not want to see the commission having to take up claims that don't even meet a bare minimum. Councilman Harris.
Well, I would agree with that, but currently the policy requires that a certain amount of information be there, which creates legal sufficiency, right?
I would disagree with that.
It does not. Then we have no definition of legal sufficiency.
You can meet the requirements of the complaint without specifically alleging every fact necessary to allege a violation. So the complaint requires you to list what you know. And people might file a complaint that says that I saw the city attorney at Costco on Thursday. Well, they may not, not notice that I was at Costco on my lunch break. And they may think that's a violation because I'm using personal shopping time on work time. But that's not what happened. They didn't allege what time they saw me. They didn't allege that I was supposed to be arguing. They just said I saw you at Costco on Thursday. That meets the requirements to go to the ethics attorney, because it has everything that's required by complaint. But it would not be legally sufficient because it doesn't have enough details to make more actual argument.
What I have a problem with is the attorney being able to deny that rather than ask for the information that is missing in order to place it before the commission. I still think the Ethics Commission, this is their job.
Maybe I see that as the same thing. The idea is you dismiss it, but you're not prohibited from refiling. And so then they can refile it with the missing facts.
It doesn't get dismissed. It's just that the city attorney or the city secretary works with that, that complaintant to say, here's what's missing. Let's get it, all of, everything that's missing before it goes on the table for the commission, but not deny it.
I don't see the difference between rejecting it because it's missing things and rejecting it because it's not legally sufficient.
It's not rejecting it at all.
It's still rejecting it. It's saying this isn't legally sufficient, you need to refile it.
It just says we're not ready to take this to the commission.
And that's what they do say. For example, you're required on your complaint to provide your phone number. If you don't provide your phone number, what the ethics attorney does is send it back to you and say, this isn't sufficient. You need to provide your phone number. To me, this is the same thing. She's just putting an opinion that explains why it's not sufficient, because it's harder than saying you didn't put your phone number.
I feel like I'm hearing Councilmember Harris that you want the ethics attorney to help the complaintant fill the gaps, the factual, evidential gaps in their complaint.
Not to fill the gaps, but if there, if there are missing things that they're going to deny it on, then that, you know, not everybody's real good at filling these out. They are not attorneys. I don't want, and I agree, I don't want frivolous complaints, but still, I think that this is the job of the Ethics Commission, to hear the complaints. And I think it's the ethics attorney's job to say, well, here are the, you know, here what we, here's what we perceive as the merits that you are considering. And then the Ethics Commission can say, it's, it's not sufficient, we're not going to approve it, we deny it. But it's not an individual, it's not a city employee doing that.
What, so if the, if there was some insufficiency in the complaint where it was not legally sufficient to be made according to the attorney, you would say that the attorney should still forward those to the board and that the board should still be able to take them up if they want, even if the attorney says it's not legally sufficient?
Yeah, I think so.
So that would include if they didn't include their phone number or their addresses required? Or would it only be if it's a factual issue?
The things that are listed in our ordinance that says you have to have this in order to file a complaint. If those are there, then the ethics attorney certainly can make an opinion on whether this is an ethical violation or if there is enough evidence even. But all that evidence is not going to be presented at that point. It should, I, I just, I'm just saying it should not at that point be denied. I think it's up to the commission to hear what the ethics attorney says, which is, it's not a good complaint. I recommend that you deny it, rather than denying it him or herself.
I agree with you, Dr. Laura Lee. I'm sorry, just wanted to jump in. Another thing I'll point out is, you don't want to see nitpicky being done. Like, this is missing, so it's not legally sufficient. It's done, maybe there was merit there, maybe there was value. So that's not what I want to see. That's why I'm being very careful in how you're bringing this ordinance up. The other thing I'll say is, when you meet the legal sufficiency thing, the ethics attorney will then correspond with you and say, I need additional information discovery questions. So there, but there you know you're going somewhere with it. But, you know, a, a person may not have all of that in the beginning. So this is like a process that builds up. So we can't just rush through it, have someone from an outside say, this is done. The commission doesn't even look at it. I do agree that it's, that I'm starting to get softer on this in that at least allow the commission that opportunity to decide for themselves if they want to review it and, and bring it back. But I think they need, at least should have that choice. Now you're just taking away the choice from people that we've asked to serve and uphold, you know, ethics and integrity as well. So I can't, can't support just having an ethics attorney dismiss complaints.
Does the form itself, when they file, does it give a listing of like what you're, like a checkbox? Like, my ethics complaint against Tobias is in referencing to this. Unprofessionalism, morals, late for council meetings, always gone, or anything, or dress attire, unprofessionalism. Does it give a breakdown, any legal activity that you witnessed? Any evidence that you've seen? Like it gives a timeline to where it breaks down that information for the, the compliance officer to where, when it gets reviewed to the Ethics Commission, each one says, okay, why are they filing on Tobias? They're saying he was unprofessional. He was, there's a checkbox.
It does not include a checkbox as to things that might constitute ethics complaints. It does require that the person provide the sections of the code that they alleged were violated.
Okay.
But from my perspective, on a difference from legal, legal sufficiency and what's required, is if I put in there that I think it violates a state law that is not within the jurisdiction of the Ethics Commission, I've checked that box for purposes of the ordinance. But my, but my complaint doesn't allege a violation of the ethics code, which is, which is what's within the jurisdiction of the Ethics Commission. And so that's what I see as the difference.
Yeah.
Right, and so the question is, do we want to make sure the ethics ordinance or commission only takes up the cases that are within their jurisdiction and are legally sufficient? Or do we want to give them the latitude to take up and fully investigate any complaint about anything, regardless of legal sufficiency or whether or not they have jurisdiction? That's essentially what, what it's all coming down to. We have, you know, dozens of complaints, the ones that are being, have been dismissed and published as being legally insufficient. It's because they are. And the, if, if we want to say, we want to, you know, leave it that way, it is possible for the commission to take up a legally insufficient complaint and just move forward with it because they want to, regardless of whether, even a violation of the ordinance was alleged. And I just don't, I think that's, I think we ought to give them more parameters. We should say, here's the ethics ordinance, here's the complaint process. The complaint has to be legally sufficient to violate this ordinance, which is what you have jurisdiction over. If it is legally sufficient, regardless of merit, and then it goes forward. And that's what it currently says. But if they're trying to make a complaint outside of the Ethics Committee's jurisdiction, why would, why would we want to go ahead and leave them that gray area to be able to just take up anything that they want? I'm not sure that they want to do that, which is why I think that they had the discussion that they did and recommended to us unanimously that they wanted this to be in here to give some kind of filtering process.
Well, it filters too much, in my opinion. It is a filter, and I agree that that would be helpful, but I don't think this gets there and protects the complainant as well, to get their complaint, complaint in front of the commission. I think from this discussion, we need to really just look at the whole ethics ordinance and assure that the, the right of the complainant is protected. Frivolous complaints are not filed. But I think just having one person do that without notification to the commission.
Just to try to read your brain, are you kind of leaning the same way Councilman Tobias was? To allow them, allow the complaint to be sent to the commission and then allow the ethics attorney to make this decision? And then the commission can say, hey, we disagree with that. We want to call that for a meeting.
Yes, yes.
I'm just trying to understand what people are.
The ethics attorney still should be able to make the recommendation. You know, I, I would say that this is not within the jurisdiction. This goes to the state AG.
But would you require the commission to vote? Because I'm not sure Councilman Tobias would. I think Councilman Tobias was okay with saying, hey, ethics attorney says this isn't sufficient, it's not going to proceed. And then Ethics Commission, if you disagree, it's incumbent upon you to reach out to the ethics attorney and say you want to have a meeting.
I have no opinion on that, as long as the commission has an ability to know that complaint's been filed.
Okay, I'm just trying to understand in case I end up having to redraft this.
I would absolutely be in favor of a, of a hybrid where, you know, after, after our, you know, ethics attorney has reviewed everything, they submit everything to the commission, say, hey, I don't feel like it meets sufficiency because of this, but this is what was filed. And then if they want to bring it up at that point and pursue it further, then it would be on them whether they wanted to or not. I, I feel like, yeah, that would create a good check and balance between the two parties.
Councilor Rizzo.
Okay, the only thing with that is, do we, if you're, have a complaint against you, now having that extra time, now you have only so many days that you have to respond, do we increase the days now on that? Because if not, you're going to have to respond to a frivolous complaint.
I think if we made that change, what I would then recommend doing is changing the section on the complaint to say that the respondent is informed that there was a complaint filed against them and they will be notified if and when they're required to respond. And then once it's determined that that complaint's going to move forward, the respondent would then have 14 days to respond.
From, from that time.
Yeah. And then at, and all complaints shall be forwarded to the Ethics Commission.
Regardless of sufficiency.
That's just the way to put that in.
It's just giving you a jury duty notice kind of scenario. Yeah, you've been got, you've got a, you had something filed on you and you, and.
And I'd love to see something on there for someone that's a repeat offender, that, well, I'm not going to use that language. Somebody that continues to file just complaints just to do it. I mean, find something in there that we can get some teeth in there to stop, to stop bad actors, right?
The term used in court is vexatious litigation.
Yeah.
I would agree with you on that, Mr. Robert Rizzo. The other thing I'll say is, the public, and we all can tell, council, everyone can understand when something looks frivolous. So it's not, it's not rocket science. So, you know, if, if, if you're doing it by the book, what do you have to worry about? Just let somebody read it, issue an opinion, and that's it. I mean, end the story, period. You know, that, those are my thoughts on.
Cool. Thank you for the conversation, everybody.
Do you want to table this and I can bring it back?
And I don't think it's that we're worrying about it. I think, I think what it is, is that it, when you see it come across, you're like, you know you didn't do that. And now all of a sudden, you're trying to do the right thing. And it's kind of disheartening when somebody's putting something out there that's not true, right? And you have to fight it back, right?
It's happened to all of us.
Yeah, so it's like, you know, it's, it's kind of one of those things. I think that's what it is, is that you know that you're doing right. You know what I mean?
I think we're all trying to do right. Everybody has their own feelings about what is and is not taking place. Everyone's entitled to that, and that's fine. I, I, I would, if, if I was making the motion, it would be to approve the legal sufficiency, but also a requirement that the, all complaints shall be forwarded to the, the Ethics Commission, regardless of legal sufficiency. Is that sufficient for y'all as a motion?
I'd second that.
Yes.
I'd like to make a, I'd like to make a motion to approve on first reading the proposed changes, adding the legal sufficiency clause and also adding language that requires all ethics complaints to be forwarded to the Ethics Commission regardless of legal sufficiency.
Second.
All right, motion by the mayor, seconded by Councilman McKenna. Is there discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
I would like to say that, you know, I saw some head nodding in the crowd whenever I was, or head shaking, I should say, when I was trying to stick up for ethics attorney. And I will say, if, if you're accused of a crime, you're hiring an attorney, not a commercial real estate agent. No disrespect to anybody on our, on our commission, but, you know, that, that opinion and that, that expertise carries weight.
I just want to finish with, it was a great discussion up here. Glad everybody put their thoughts into it. Is it perfect? It's not. Look, I, I think our original planners of the city had the best of intentions in here. And, you know, we're kind of keeping that, but it, it's just tough. I mean, it's, it's one of those things that we're going to have to work through, but I'm good with it.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, like to, we need to keep the Ethics Commission people updated on everything.
All right, any further discussion?
Their job.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero. We're going to take a 10-minute break. We're going to reconvene at 8:45.
We're going to reconvene at eight forty-five. All right, I'm going to call this meeting back to order. It's eight forty-seven P M. Next up, we're going to go to Agenda Item Number Four, receive a report, hold a discussion, and provide staff feedback on the design for a community and senior activity center at fifteen hundred Dacey Lane.
Turn the mic on, there we go. All right, good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. On April first of this year, we brought a design contract for the facility at fifteen hundred Dacey for architectural final design. During that time, you, the City Council, gave feedback that you were partial to the Max Flex option for the facility layout, but only with some additional enhancement that would maximize the flexibility for the space. We took that feedback and we went back into the design development process with our consultant, B S W Architecture Firm, and our senior stakeholders, CAS, and looked to maximize or optimize the flexibility for the space. And before we entered to the next phase of design, which is the construction documents and the most expensive phase of the design, we wanted to come back before Council to ensure that we were on the right track before we make that deeper commitment. So at this time, I'd like to welcome Stephen Springs of B S W Architects to the podium to give more details on that process and plan.
Great, thank you. It's a pleasure to be back in front of you guys again and show you our progress on this. We start with a little bit of history. I know you guys have a tremendous amount of projects and development going on, so it might be a little quick, quick refresher. I'll be as fast as I can, be in the interest of time, but please tell me to pause or ask me any questions along the way as we go. So I know you guys are familiar with the site. Here's the aerial view of it. It's on a top of a hill, it's got some slope challenges and some visibility challenges. It is next to an empty pad. The existing conditions are pretty raw, so you can see the inside is shelled out and ready for improvement. There's a built building and an unbuilt pad, so the the subject site is what's available there. You see on the bottom side of your screen, there's a sliver of the building on the right-hand side that's already occupied by a tenant, but the bulk of the building is available for this project, and that amounts to about 10,000 square feet. There's just under 100 parking spaces on this site, some, a few of which are kind of spoken for by that existing tenant, but it's also mostly shared, I guess I would say. So where we were last time was looking mostly at the floor plan. I'm going to touch on that after I speak a moment about the site plan. The site plan was something that wasn't really well defined yet as to what, at that point in time, frankly, we didn't even really know exactly what rights the city had on the site, and we were trying to make sure that we understood the purchase agreement and that kind of a thing. So this graphic is intended to kind of show how that site work has been scoped since we last spoke. So the darker green is is currently being budgeted and priced as landscape area. That has to do mostly mostly with some of the challenges to the topography. There is some soil erosion and washout happening in in places that we are putting a little more effort into the the height, the landscaping there, and also at the front entry to kind of give it an improved sense of entry. The lighter green is shown to be hydroseed. The orange color would be hardscape. And then there's a little bit of new pavement along the front of the building where we're adjusting a sidewalk. There's also an existing site sign that we are still looking at how we might modify that sign to give the new project sort of top billing, if you will, and make that a little easier to find. Now onto the floor plan. Here's a blow up of that existing condition. We've added the kind of red dots to show where the existing column grids are that we need to respect. As you may recall, we were really having to navigate those column grids and the plan layout, so we've made that a little bit easier to see. This is what we presented last time that we called the Max Flex option. And as David mentioned, what we, the main feedback we got was even more Max. We thought it was Max Flex, but it wasn't Max the Enough Flex. So we took that to heart, and you'll see the new plan. Another thing we heard was maybe there's too much lounge space. And really, to be honest, we kind of felt that way, too. We, at that point, we hadn't really programmed the admin suite yet. We didn't know how how it was going to be staffed quite yet and things of that nature. So that area kind of matured and took kind of took care of itself. So here's where we are now. You can see the the multipurpose rooms are now opened up. We have that, we show that sort of crosshatch pattern that is in that corridor, but we've added more partitions, so it really does create that truly Max Flex space. Rearrange the partitions to create flexibility, not just two rooms potentially into three, but really a very large space potentially divisible in it up to six. The admin suite now has grown to provide adequate space for for that that effort. And the lounge has kind of been right sized, I would argue, to that to that point. Some efforts that are still ongoing is truly defining the kitchen. It is is still, we've got a food service consultant on board right now. That that bit of the plan hasn't been firmly set, but we're getting very close. The rest of the spaces are pretty much what you have seen before. Each of those rooms, kind of anticipating a question, is roughly, depending on how you see it, around an occupancy of, say, 50. So you could think of that as roughly 150 on either side, or even up to a few hundred if it was all grouped together. And that just kind of is what it is in terms of fitting within the envelope that we are are dealing with here. In terms of budget, so we have repriced it based on a D D level design concept. We are still under around four million for the everything all-in total project budget cost. That was number we were hoping to stay within. It it did come up some as we were going through design. You can see how how the the concept estimate and our current D D estimate kind of align there. A couple of budget items just kind of moved from one category to another as design matured. Also, that I would point out, the the initial estimate was based on a just a cost per square foot. We kind of had a a high and a low number from an estimator, and we kind of aimed for the middle, if you will. Now the estimator has something they can actually kind of take off and measure, and the scope is is more into view. So that number did move up. Are there any other questions about any of the previous slides or this slide?
Just on the design, can you go to the design? I just have one question. Is, are you, are you saying that this multipurpose room could be used as a single event space where everybody would be in one event simultaneously? So there'd be, you know,
Right.
over 100 people?
Absolutely.
So what are these, the two black, it looks like stairs?
So those are stacked partitions.
Where everything pushes together?
Yeah, we, you can imagine, we toyed around with, I don't know how many iterations of where to stack the partitions that was least in the way. But given the column grids and given some other situations, it was not a an ideal place for them. And also, the challenge is making sure we have proper exiting from each room. And so we were trying to minimize the confusion of doors and how many doors would have to be in a partition. So this was the the path to least resistance layout, I would say. So if it's all being wide open in that scenario, I would say it's not necessarily super ideal because you do have those partition enclosures in there. And there are a couple of columns you can see on the, like, I don't know if my pointer probably doesn't work, but.
The black squares are columns?
Yeah, the black squares that are between the stacked partitions on the right and the lounge to the left, those are columns. We actually looked at, is it feasible to remove those columns? And it just really wasn't. Even, not only was it expensive, but there were other ramifications that just made the space even more kind of odd. The ceilings would get like really low to pull that off with a beam. So we just, we left those columns in place and we tried to work with them as best we can.
If you wouldn't mind going back to the map on three, yes, right there. Now, the map, the actual map itself.
Oh, the, one of these?
One more up, leave, the one that shows the street. Okay, right there.
Sure.
I can ask real quick, Mr. Langley, that triangle space that's right there on Dacey Lane that's around, that has the, that middle section there, you see what I'm talking about? The, it's like a triangle shape. Where Dacey Lane, yes, and Dacey Loop is. Did we still identify if that's still city property? Because I'm looking now, so when we look at trying to find a way for safer exits, if that land could eventually be utilized somehow.
You're talking about that entire triangular piece between where it says Dacey L P back to Dacey Lane?
Dacey Loop and Dacey Lane, yes.
No, I don't believe that is city property.
Okay.
We can certainly look at other options with it.
Okay, thank you.
So I think the question is, do we like the, do we like the more open layout? Or is there something different than we would prefer?
Did we hear you well, I guess is the question.
Councilor Rizzo.
Yeah, definitely, when I'm looking at the columns, and I went through this design in my head a million times. Keep, I kept looking at it because I really love to have it all open. But the the reason I'm kind of backtracking on that a little bit and really probably in sync with this design right here is because we do need some extra rooms if we decide to do something different there, different programming. And I think this is the least invasive, and we could still do the open plan design. So I'm kind of, I'm kind of in favor of this because I think, I keep running it back and forth in my head and how I could do it different, but there's not really a way to do it different. I think this is a great plan that you're bringing forward, I can get behind it. You know, it's less invasive, and it still gives us pretty much an open plan if we need it. So the best open plan we can get. So I appreciate y'all bringing this back and doing your homework on this. My next question is to, sorry, City Manager Brian, are we going to do an owner's rep on this? Because the only reason why is the price seems a little high. I'd love to have an owner's rep on this project for that big of a price.
I haven't made that decision yet. I don't know if Mr. Lopez has a recommendation on that yet or not.
Yeah, I mean, we've talked about doing competitive still bid for this one, and, you know, especially with the fluctuation in the market. So to your point, I mean, we like to control this as much as possible. Sometimes you don't get as much bites on these when you go construction manager at risk because, you know, the fees aren't as lucrative to some of the better firms out there. But we could look into both options and see what's best.
And if we've got an owner's rep on a project right now, maybe they'll be flexible to, you know, do something like this at a smaller cost, right? Because it's a smaller project.
Yeah, usually they charge by the fee.
Yeah, maybe they'll, they'll work on us a little bit. No reason, it seems a little high. I think we could probably have some savings here and there, it might be lucrative for us. But, yeah, it just, it just seems a little high.
We can certainly look at some delivery options for it.
And the other thing is, having the owner's rep, the the win on that is you have a set of eyes on there looking at the project, making sure it's built to spec what you're asking for. When you don't have that set of eyes on there, you're you're kind of like at the end of the project, you're like, what happened here?
And if I may, you know, I could talk to our architecture, architectural firm, but sometimes they'd like to be brought in a little bit early in the process, but because we haven't gotten into construction design, you know, it may be lucrative in one of them because they can give input on like the materials that are, that have the shorter lead times or easier to secure. And, you know, then you can guarantee maximum price.
Councilor Rizzo.
So what were the height, what's the height of the building? Or is, is there going to be any balcony or upstairs area where?
There is an existing, it's termed a mechanical mezzanine hatch you see there. So that's not, not an accessible space, but that is where we plan to put mechanical units up, up on a mezzanine. So you can see that the photo on the right, there's a very defined plane that's throughout that building. The bottom of that truss is pretty much something we have to respect, and that's at 12 feet. So our our goal is to try to maximize our ceiling height in those large rooms so that they don't get too too heavy. So we're looking at the partitions being 10 feet tall in order to get structure between that 12-foot line and have structure in the ceiling and then having coffered, you know, raised ceilings above that, so.
Yeah, no, I'm in favor of the layout. I just thought maybe the storage could move if if there was any room in the upper, but that's, that's fine.
Unfortunately, technically, no. If we made it accessible, then you're triggering things like stairs and elevators that
Okay.
aren't practical.
Councilor McKenna.
If I'm looking at it correctly, there's only one wheelchair or handicap accessible stall on each side. Considering who's going to be utilizing this facility, you know, the majority of the time, I'm wondering if that's appropriate.
One per gender on the left, there's also a caregiver room on the far right, the other blue box. So we have an extra. Right now, our fixture count is based on this assembly occupancy. So we really couldn't add another wider stall without increasing the size of the room.
The one by the kitchen, if you don't mind, is that going to be a wheelchair accessible as far as like the mobile chairs?
The whole, the whole building will will meet all the ADA requirements that it needs to.
Councilor Harris.
I would just like to make sure that when the materials are considered for this building that we include consideration on sound deadening. The room that we're in right now, CAS is in right now, is really very echoey, and it's hard to hear. And for our senior citizens, that's a big problem. So assuring that we have good acoustics. In the, big rooms get very noisy and very loud very quickly. I love the design, I think that's what we need, but we do want to be careful with the materials.
Thank you for that comment.
You said that you're going to do two-foot drop ceilings across the entire thing?
No, we're trying to, well, we'll have lay-in ceilings pretty much throughout. There will be bulkheads that we need for the partition tracks to run in, so that the bulkheads will be the lower, the 10 feet. But we're going to hold the room ceiling as close to that 12-foot line as we can, we can get it.
Well, I guess my my only thinking is, I understand that everything has a trade off. My 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 feedback has always been, and my experience has been, open is better, which is why I was kind of trying to figure out an open scenario. But I think that the partitions, the way they're designed, still make it very unrealistic to host an event where there's a speaker, you know, a large room, a large luncheon or something like that, you know. So almost to me, what I would prefer is to take all the partitions out, remove the wall, the entrance wall, so that there's no hallway. When you open up, when you come in from that southern, southwestern corner, you know, into the main entrance, it would just be, it would be entirely open. The lounge would still be there and partitioned off and walled off, but that entire area could be opened for large events. It could be sound deadened, too, but I just, I worry that by putting in all the different rooms, you're going to lose the one thing that I already know CAS needs, which is the ability to host more than 50 people at one time and, you know, and to have the ability to have speakers and things like that. We could still accomplish that by just taking that first right wall out and then all the partitions. So you still have the, you know, the stabilizing, you know, posts, but that would be the only thing, and it would just be big and open. And when they want to, when the CAS wants to break out into smaller sections, that's the trade off. It's just you don't have the walls in order to have a bunch of individual rooms, but you could still probably come up with some.
You're right, that is the trade off. These are acoustically rated partitions, so when they're drawn, you have rooms that have isolation from the noise in their neighboring rooms and that kind of thing. So that, you're right, I mean, that is, that's the trade off, the flexibility.
I'm worried that what we're getting out of this is less of both. Nobody's getting anything good, really. So I would rather almost go back to the original, go ahead and make the rooms full rooms, or truly open it up and just take the walls out, take the partitions out, and have it be a big, open, community space that can be used for functions. That's, that's what's in my head. I'm not trying to make, I'm fine with whatever, I just.
What if we move those partitions to the backside, and then you'd have all that big, open area on that front side? I think that's what you're looking at. But if we move those two partitions right there, those two tracks over to the left side, to the other two beams, would that give you enough openness from the kitchen that way?
It would help. You're saying, instead of them being on the right center, have them on the left center closer to where they're, yeah? I don't know if that's.
And then you could still be able to close up your rooms if you needed them.
I'm just thinking to myself, you have 100 people there for a lunch, which could conceivably happen in the very first year. And there's somebody who's going to speak, where would they stand and how would that be configured? I don't, you know.
A hundred would fit in one or the other.
I think, I think if you were to move those to the left, that would give you closer to your concept that you're looking at, somebody speaking out there in the front and being able to see everyone. I think, I think if you were to move those to the left, that would give you closer to your concept that you're looking at, somebody speaking out there in the front and being able to see everyone. But, uh, that would give you a bigger open area from the kitchen area.
I'm, I'm open to whatever. I, I really like the idea of walking in and it's a big open space from that door. But I, that's just what I would do. You're not wrong. If you do that, that would help it a little bit. I think you still kind of, the, the partitions.
It would still, it would close up and you're still looking at the lines. Just know that the lines disappear when the, when they get folded in.
Right.
So those lines go away. You don't have that hallway no more.
I want to volunteer one observation for y'alls debate here. One of the things that we are wrestling with and we kept trying to lay out these stacked partitions in different places. Was when they, when they were fully on one end. It, it inhibits the ability to carve up. The three spaces because the only way to carve it would be to draw that one partition all the way across the three rooms.
It's heavy.
Because when it, when it's in either the spot that it's in now or the immediate one left, when it's at the crosshair of a track. Then you have the ability to have the one and then a double.
Yep.
Versus if you put it all the way in one end, it's either. One big room or two big rooms, which is fine if that's what you want, but. That's what we were wrestling with when we were laying all this stuff out is this was, this attempt was, how do you get the whole space open? But how could you have six classes? Now, if six classes is not. A premise, then you can, good to your point, you could go back up to more, more open. In that case, it would be more like two rooms when it's divided. As opposed to six.
Isn't it kind of like? Yeah. It's kind of like when we go to conferences or like you go to embassy suites where when you have. Conferences, they have different classrooms.
Right. And in that scenario, say you had a, a function with a meal, you would have that in that front room and then the rooms on the south. Of this plan could be your three breakout. Rooms if you were having that sort of event. It, it's all trade-offs.
It's all trade-offs. Yeah.
Yeah. And, and then working really closely with Kaz and, you know, also looking at some of the citywide needs for meeting space after hours, since Kaz won't be there, you know? You know, through 11:00 PM, a lot of the programming ends early evening. Uh, and so if it's not in use by Kaz, you can have, there's a lot of civic groups and 501(c)(3)'s that need meeting spaces and. There's a lot of opportunity for park and recreation program for the area. So we tried to factor everything into this.
There's a lot of HOAs that are always looking for space to meet and they can't always get it with the schools.
Well, it's, we don't have space for either, we don't have room space. We also don't have big, big space.
Cities, for the city events.
So either way you go, maybe, maybe one option could be, let's leave the, the whole bottom section open and then just have the top three. And then that way you could still have that open feeling when you walk in and you'd still get three rooms, but it's just one less big giant. Partition i- in the way. I don't know.
We'll be also.
And we. That's exactly what you said, but that's.
Yeah, we also factored in audio visual for those rooms too, to have, you know, TVs on the walls if. Um, you know, if we ever had the big event space and there was any difficulty, uh, maybe seeing the main riser area. You can have these auxiliary televisions throughout to make that easier and have a good sound system.
Well, there's just nothing worse than being behind a partition while you're trying to listen to a speaker and you're just completely blocked, which seems like the way it's designed there would happen real easily. But so, yeah, it's trade-off though.
Yeah, the whole.
The more open you go, the less rooms you have.
Multi-purpose rooms are master of none.
I think the reason that I'm stuck on it is because in my head, the big space was the thing, you know? And going into the smaller rooms is, is going against what the big, we're running out of room at Krug. Let's get, we need something bigger because our lunches are starting to sell out. And so I just, I thought of that as a primary objective. But if it's not, if, especially Dr. Harris, if you have thoughts on it, if you think, no, we, we want it actually more blocked up and we want the focus to be on being able to have six different multi-purpose rooms. Then we can just, we can go with it that way.
Meeting driven versus program driven.
Right.
I think we still have the big dinners with the, uh, partitions in, so I think we'll be okay. And then like David said, uh, having the TVs and a good sound system in there will give everybody an angle of view of the speakers, so.
You, you couldn't agree to maybe just do half the rooms, just the top half of the rooms and then leave the bottom all open.
I'm amenable to anything. I mean, it's, uh, uh, I know we're lacking meeting space for groups, uh, so I guess I'm taking that into consideration as well, but. Having three meeting spaces is, is still more than what we have right now.
If you wanted to have one open, my recommendation would be have that be the one that's associated with the kitchen.
Is the one that's open?
Yeah. Because that's more likely to be your large banquet scenario. And having that a proximity to the kitchen, I think would make sense. I mean, I get what you're saying about coming through the lounge and seeing the openness. But I think the kitchen would be associated typically with the larger room if you wanted to.
Just make that the open space to where you're coming through the lounge and then there's that big open space there. Cause you still have that where you see all the lines, you still have space there that you can use and, um.
But that's just hallway. Hallways are dead space, you know? They're just for traveling.
But you could still set up, like if that's a hallway though, you could still set up chairs.
But if you made that one the large room, that northern, uh, how much I could.
Yeah, the northern section up there, you just made that the large one.
So, so one thing with the partitions open, there's no hallway. Once the partitions are open, those dotted lines, that's just blank room.
It becomes, it becomes part of the.
Yeah, it becomes part of the space. Because like on your very bottom one right there, Travis, on the very bottom, you'd see where you see where the partition, that could be your stage area if you needed to. And then you'd have that open space, people coming through the lounge. You'd have your chair set up all the way up here. You have the kitchen. So if you were to have an event to where you had a meal. You'd have that open space there and then you have these rooms in the back to wherever you have to have breakout rooms. If you have to have a speaker or somebody that needs to have their own little private space there, they can have that space there, but then you'd have that room, these, that open space that leads to the kitchen. And then you have entrance, two entrance ways up there and then including the lounge. You know, if you, like I said, I mean, I get what you're saying. If we were to have any city events and we wanted to have a speaker or whoever it is. That could be their podium that way facing north. And then you'd have the kitchen on this side and you have the bathrooms over here. Cause if you leave all that open, again, I, I haven't attended any of the Kaz's, uh, holiday meals, but I hear they're getting bigger and bigger. So that could be the option there.
This is already bigger than what they have.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's way bigger, yeah.
So you've got some growth, but I actually think if you wanted to split those priorities, that that makes a lot of sense. Do away with that double stack that's on the northern. Side of that corridor. That goes away and it just becomes another annoying column, but at least it's not the big. You know, closet of stacks. Um, and you might not even, even need those other two. Stacks that are on the far north.
Right.
Or if later on you have city lunch. That's an easy change, saves a chunk of.
Saves money, opens it up a little bit.
And then you still have your programming capability on the three.
I'm sure you could. Yeah, it's all, it's just running, there's not, they're not load bearing.
Sliding doors, right? I mean.
Well, but it's a significant cost because not just the panels aren't cheap, but we're having to structure them. So each one of those has got a steel beam to carry the load of that. So we'd be doing away with a chunk of it.
I, I, I think maybe if you didn't have to have it all like soundproofed with, with full AV and stuff, you could still roll some things out to make some makeshift rooms. But that the majority of the time it would be, you know, as open as possible. I think it's going to be, I don't think you're going to regret the openness of it. And again, you can always roll out walls easier than this. These, those are permanent fixtures that we're going to have to go around from day one. The, and I think we're going to have dozens of very large events. Once this thing's here with the kitchen and everything, that, you know, it'll be Kaz events. It'll be, it'll be other things as well in the evenings. You'd be able to rent it out a lot, but for the, the bigger events would be pretty nice. With a good AV package too, because the only thing we have right now is Texas Old Town and their AV package is terrible.
Fully integrated AV.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I'm, I'm okay with, with whatever anyone wants to do. I just wanted to make my thoughts known on the openness.
So you're good with just doing away with the petitions on one side, which is the kitchen side and then keeping the one, the other three rooms? Mayor, I'd like to make a motion on agenda I four to approve as presented with doing away with the petitions on the, uh. Upper side, uh, where the kitchen areas.
Second.
All right. Motion by Councilor Rizzo, seconded by Councilmember McKinney that we, uh, direct staff proceed and taking out the, the northern section of partitions, but everything else staying the same. Is there discussion on that motion? That, that will open up the hallway to be an additional amount, right? For seating or whatever in the, the main open areas? Okay. Anything else? Brian, does that make sense to you? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
I just want to comment that if, if we decide we want to put them back in, in the future, there's, there's an option.
Yes.
There's a, there's a method to doing that, right? Cause.
Yeah, cause it's all drop ceilings. So we could always do it in the future.
Want Kaz to, I guess, understand that. I understand there, we want more classrooms, but it does benefit having a larger open space. Near the kitchen.
The only thing I might could, could add is what if we took one of those, that, that leftern most, leftern? Leftmost room out as well, so that it was just, we're saying we don't want two multi-purpose rooms. And then, and then that would be opened up. You could have that be something else.
I'd leave that as three rooms. I think Kaz can use that.
All right, I'll, I'll say no more.
Yeah, I'm not trying to get in, I'm not trying to get into the, to the design of it. That's.
I'm just, I love walking in and it's, it's open. That's all. Instead of walking into a hallway, that's very.
So what, what is the timeline on this one? Cause I know we, we're trying to push it to. Get closer to completion date.
So we know we have an aggressive schedule. We're just trying to move as fast as we can. So right now we, with this direction. In fact, we're, we're already kind of in CDs, um, but we, we're getting involved in interior design and getting all the consultant stuff coordinated. Our goal is to get this, have this out on the street, bid it permitted in July. Um, and try to get you guys in by the end of the year. That was what we heard day one. We think that's doable, but it's tight. Um, and we're just working as quick as we can to try to make that happen for you.
So, so why July forbidding and permitting? I mean, we're, we're. Is that the end of July?
It's only a month from now.
Well, we still, we're still, we're, we're, we're going to float through June.
We just voted on the plans just now.
Well.
Thirty days to go.
I'm trying to get it done. I'm trying to speed it up.
All right, we're going to move on.
We all want it fast.
In looking at the landscaping around, I just want to make sure that whoever our landscape contractor is, is provided with our Kyle Landscape. Authorized Landscape Plants list and they will be all native and, and from our list, not from anybody else's list.
Yeah, actually we're, I'm glad you brought that up because Lionheart is the sub on that and they have used 100% of plans from our approved plant list.
That's, I think we should be requiring that of all of our landscaping contractors that they use those plants instead of any other introduced plants.
Thank you. Lionheart's been great to work with and helping us to accomplish that.
All right. All right. We're going to move on to agenda item number five. Receive a report, hold discussion, provide staff direction on the Hays County Homeless Coalition 2025. Point in time, uh, count and survey analysis. Mr. Elizondo.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. While they pull up the presentation here, um, last year, almost around this time, almost to the day. We had our homeless coalition of Hays County come and give us a report on their point in time count, as well as the survey analysis for 2024. So this year we have a update with the 2025 numbers, a very similar presentation. I have with us tonight, giving the presentation Lisa Young from the Hays County Food Bank. And also Nancy Heinz from, who's Board Secretary of the, uh, Hays County Coalition. So I'm going to let them come up and give the presentation and we're happy to have them here.
Mayor, council people, uh, we're glad to be here. Thank you for, on behalf of the board, we thank you for, um, putting us into your busy agenda. Y'all have a, a full agenda, so we appreciate the opportunity. What we'll do is just go through some of the basics. I know that the board is pretty, uh, council is pretty familiar with this, but again. The point in time count is an annual count that's required by HUD from every, um, continuum of care, which we belong to Texas Homeless Network. And so we're the, uh, local homeless coalition for Hays County and we facilitate the count. The, as we've mentioned in the past, this is not really a, a head count as much as getting a snapshot. We know because we have a 24 hour period that we're working within, there's no way to locate people. And in order for them to be surveyed or to be included, you have to have, um, contact with them on this date. The date was January the 23rd. So the question for our surveyors were where are you, were you going to sleep on the night of January the 23rd? Again, this just goes over the, the initiative for why this is done. Our agencies, the, one of the, the benefits from this data, uh, is for, uh, cities and for organizations to use this data. In hopes of applying for funding that addresses the situations that are present within our county and in, uh, local municipalities. To find solutions that deal with that. All the challenges that come with that. So just for basic, for those who aren't familiar definitions and scope of this, on the night we're doing two, uh, or during that day, we're doing two different counts. During the daylight from 6:30 in the morning till 6:30 at night, uh, we were looking for unsheltered people. Unsheltered means that those are the people that are living in places not meant for human habitation. What we probably most think of people in encampments, people living in their cars, people under a overpass or wherever they might be. Making that their, their home. The sheltered locations for Hays County that are included are, are emergency shelter that we have. Uh, for Hays County is the Hays Caldwell Women's Shelter, which is obviously population specific. And because of their population, they do the surveys for us in-house. Their case management does that and submits that. We also had transitional housing that's included for Hays County. Uh, we have South Side Community Center. And, uh, the women's shelter has Marla's Place, which is transitional housing for people that are coming out of the women's shelter. And then they work that, with them for a maximum of two years to help them stabilize before they move on to permanent housing solutions. We also have, uh, for this year, we included the hotel motel stays that were, uh, were funded by a grant. That BR3T had, um. Received. Uh, this is the third year, I believe, that we've been able to include that. The surveys are done by our, uh, trained volunteers. We use the mobile app called Counting Us. The whole point is to ask questions if people will engage with you. Uh, you want to have a conversation with them to answer, it's about 10 questions. But, um, that way, when they answer, the answers are put into this mobile app and then they're immediately submitted. To the regional command center that Texas Homeless Network runs. And then the data that we receive to create this report comes directly from Texas Homeless Network. The people that are not, um, included, individuals in permanent housing or temporary shell situations do not count for the purpose of point in time count. Also permanent housing, uh, which includes permanent supportive housing, uh, rapid rehousing programs, HUD VAS, which is the section eight. Housing for veterans, um, and FEMA projects. Temporary situations that include individuals doubled up, uh, with friends or family and those who are at risk of homelessness. Hotel motel stays that are paid for by the individuals themselves. HUD looks as that, at that like people have their resources if they can pay for themselves. That's why we're enabled, we're able to include when a grant is paying for those stays, but not individuals. Uh, sober living does not include, included in this foster care. Uh, none of the criminal justice, uh, or health facilities are included. What the count does tell us is that approximately how many people were experiencing homelessness in Hays County on the night of January the 23rd? That official report is what's submitted to HUD. And so for the year of, uh, 2025, uh, it will be, that's our official numbers. So anyone that's trying to, uh, make a case for the need of a grant. Or, uh, CDBG funds or things like that. This is the data that's recognized by HUD. Trends over time, part of this is that we understand in the five years that Hays County has done the point in time count. But you can see some trends, some certain populations that continue to grow. Maybe they decrease this year, but you can kind of see what's going on with them. Based on again, what they're willing to share on the, in the survey. The other thing that the count does tell us is. The other thing that the count does tell us is insights into the effectiveness of housing programs and homelessness services in Hays County. Part of this is to identify, we continually see the same gaps in housing and some of the services that are missing in a county the size of Hays County. What the count can't tell us is the total number of people who experienced homelessness in Hays County for any period of time over the course of the past year. So it's not that type of report. It also doesn't tell us how many people are precariously housed. For example, people that are couch surfing or on the verge of eviction. We know that evictions are an issue that people are dealing with. They're at risk of becoming homeless, but for the sake of this count, that's not reflected in the data. Or even others who do not meet HUD's definition of homelessness. We're required by HUD to base things on their criteria. This is what's done nationally, so they want everything to be collected in a uniform way, so that when you're looking at the outcomes from this, that it's telling the same kind of unique story, maybe based on your area, but it's, the questions have all been asked, the same questions have been asked. So you can see our comparisons since 2020 up until 2025. I'd remind you, we show three different colors. We show observations. Observations are when surveyors, for whatever reason, cannot engage with people, or they don't want to engage. Sometimes it's not safe, maybe they're, where they see them, they can't get back to them because maybe they were on a roadway or some, in some other situation. But, so those are, those people are observed, they can do some basic questions that qualify as a completed survey, but they are, the 18 that we have this year, observations, that 18 is really reflected in the total number of unsheltered. That's assumed, again, the assumption is that when you see them, they have some indicators that HUD has said, you can assume that they are experiencing homelessness, so based on that, but it's because you don't know anything about their housing situation and informed information, then that rolls into that count. So total, we had 55 that were unsheltered this year, and 132 that were sheltered. You can see the change, in last year, we were 210, so there was a little bit of change. Some of the sum of sheltered this year was affected because it was a cold weather night, and so Southside was open and was sheltering people. That counted, our surveyors were surveying people that were being sheltered that night at that emergency shelter. That falls into the category of emergency shelter for the weather. We gave you a little more information this year in some age and summary breakdown. You can see the ages. Under five, when you see that significant number under five of 38 that were sheltered, a lot of those are in the women's shelter. But again, you can see the breakdown. We don't get into unsheltered until you see the 18 to 24, and then you can see how the numbers have changed. A significant number in the 35 to 44 age range, and then again, it starts to decrease as you get older in these numbers. So the largest groups, let's see, if there's anything, I think that was, the main thing was what I pointed out. Gender, the breakdown of gender, you can see that men, which includes boys as well, that was a higher gender classification for the people we did count. And then the women, again, you can see the numbers there, again, broken out by unsheltered and sheltered. So that was a pretty equal distribution on the numbers, but men do account for almost double of what you see in women. Demographics, again, you can see what the different demographics are. Most of the respondents were Hispanic and white. That's not unusual, that seems to have been kind of a steady trend for us in Hays County. The additional homeless populations are the ones that normally, this is a very specific question that's part of the survey, and if people, again, these are self-identifying, so on the question of serious mental illness, that's because the question says, have you been told, or do you believe that you have a serious mental condition? If they say yes, then there's some other questions to include in that. But these are the populations that HUD looks at nationally, so when they're going into a funding period for the next year, the next cycle, sometimes the decisions where they put most of their money goes where the greatest need is. So back in 2015, veterans showed up as a major population that needed more poured into the funding for solutions for them, and so that was kind of the focus of that, that funds for that cycle. But you can see with the breakdown of the survivors of domestic violence, adults with HIV/AIDS, again, mental illness, substance abuse disorder, chronically homeless, you remember, those are the people that, most people, when they have a mental picture of what someone who's homeless looks like, it's a person who's been out for quite a while. And they also, to be chronic means that they have a diagnosed disability. It has to be recognized, and they've been out for at least 12 months. It doesn't have to happen sequentially, it can happen in over, maybe they get in to stay with friends for a while, and then they're homeless again. But once it adds to 12 months or more, then they're considered in the chronic category. So approximately 44% of the respondents identified as survivors of domestic violence, and we've all been reading that domestic violence has been on the rise, probably as a result of a lot of other things that are going on around us. This is the regional map, so you can see the breakdown. One of the things that the mobile app does is it, wherever our surveyors are, when they submit that survey, that drops a pin there on the regional map. So in order to give you kind of a perspective of where we were seeing people, for Kyle, we were able to find, locate two people that day. Beuta four, Wimberly two, and San Marcos, which is consistently where services are located for the most part, and so that's kind of where you're going to always see the larger number until we do a better job of spreading out our resources across the county. Dripping Springs, we spent more time in Dripping Springs this year for two different timeframes of the day. Our surveyors do a three-hour shift, and so we had six hours that we spent over the day in Dripping Springs, but just did not locate anybody that day. Again, it's a pretty transient population, they're moved along pretty quickly. Any questions about any of that?
One with the mental illness, you're saying that they have to say they've got mental illness. The people taking the polls, can they just determine the person's mental illness? Because they might not agree, they might not say they're mentally ill, but you can tell they are.
No. We train our surveyors not to assume anything. You go basic on what the answer is. I will tell you, the answers can be, I don't know, or I don't want to answer, and that's a valid answer, either one of those. So it's not like you look at someone and think, you know, obviously, you're not, you don't understand what I'm asking, or, but that's not for the surveyor to determine. So it really has to be self-declared, and again, you can see how that can impact your answers sometimes when people, especially if you're getting a lot of no's, or, you know, I don't know.
Yeah, I was just wondering, because you lose funding, because you always know this person is dealing with something, but I didn't know we were sending out professionals to do this, or just volunteers?
Yeah. It still is, the volunteers are trained. We've had, we had more probably professional, we really keyed in on mental health professionals, more case managers and people like that, that could commit to being with us on that day, so that they had, again, maybe a little more background in how you engage someone in a conversation to get to that pretty private type of information.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I'm Lisa Young. I am the co-chair of the Hays County Homeless Coalition. I'm also the executive director of the Hays County Food Bank. I also represent the state of Texas in the prenatal to age three policy impact, it's a nationwide organization looking at those really small children. And so I'm here to talk about our school kids. So when we look at those numbers, and we see two in Kyle, but wait, there's more. So the McKinney-Vento data, this is going to be in addition to the numbers that we saw on the night of the 23rd. So every school, K through 12 in the country, is federally mandated to gather this information at enrollment. If, like me, you've got a passel of kids, you've seen this. The paper, right when you're a child, every school year, you get something home, fill out these 25 different things for the school, right? What's your favorite, this, what's that, what's your phone number? And one of them asks, do you have a lease in your name? Do you have a house that you have mortgage? Do you live in a house? And it gives you all these different choices about where you might be. And you might be unsheltered, you might be, some people won't say they're homeless, especially if they feel like the school and CPS has taken a look, but they're living in a car, or they're living in something that isn't fit for human habitation, like an RV that doesn't have electricity or running water. So those numbers are reported in the fall, when enrollment starts, and by October, we expect every school to have their complete report. It's definitely gone back to the feds, and it comes to the Coalition too, so that we can see the number of the children in the school district that are experiencing homelessness. The definitions are slightly different. We can count children in McKinney-Vento who are staying in a motel that their own family paid for, whereas we can't during the street count on pit count night, it has, because then it seemed that they had enough resources to get a motel. We're looking here, as people that are a little bit different, they are very housing-insecure, if not completely unsheltered, or living in some other doubled-up situation. Mom might let you sleep on the couch, but any day, mom could say, I'm tired of your nonsense, get out. That means you don't have a lease in your name, and really know that you've got a permanent place to stay in many cases. So looking at this, we have our school districts across the county, and this, when you see these PK to five, six to eight, those are grades, not ages. So that is pre-K to grade five, grade six to eight, and then the nine to 12, the high school age kids. And we see in Hays that the biggest number, once again, we have, is, are doubled up. So that is the orange bar, and those are families that either, like I said, sleeping on mom's couch, staying at somebody else's house. The reason I mentioned that prenatal to age three policy impacting I'm on, is that when we look at the nationwide data from that group, we see that most likely to be evicted is actually infant, a family with an infant in it, and the second most likely to be evicted is infant to age five. So these families with very young children, it shouldn't surprise us at all to see that that's the biggest group that's doubling up. Those are, that could have been evicted and are now staying with a family member, they could even be more than one family that have all got together to get an apartment or a motel. And then the blue are people who are staying in a hotel or motel, whether on their own dime or through a program. And then the green are people who are staying in a shelter or transitional housing area. Way at the very top in the San Marcos ISD, we do see a little red section, that is unsheltered. And so those are people who are actually living outdoors, perhaps in a car, that are completely unsheltered. We didn't have any that identified in that way in the Hays CISD, but we do in the San Marcos CISD. The other thing about the San Marcos one, besides the fact that it's just a larger city, so we expect to see larger numbers, but that is also where the Hays Caldwell Women's Shelter is, and so a lot of the kids that are staying at that shelter are going to San Marcos ISD. So we would expect their numbers to look like this. As Nancy said, when you look at the, in your packet, you'll see, like when they asked, you know, questions about different demographic areas, it's not the same number each time, it's the number of people who responded to that question. So if someone was just observed, and we didn't actually interview them, they won't be counted of whether they're LGBT, or whether they have a mental illness, because we had no way of finding that out, because we did not interview them. So that's why those numbers vary, whether people want to answer those questions or not. The other thing to underline too, that Nancy pointed out, is that this was a hard freeze night. Emergency shelters were activated, Southside was open, January 23rd was a hard freeze. So that could cut either way, right? Anyone, there will be people, there will be extra people at Southside that we could easily count, but also, anyone who could have scraped up hotel money did so. Anyone who had a place to hole up where they felt that they were warm and safe, even if it was in a culvert, they stayed there. So counting people on the street is not as easy during a hard freeze like that. The other limitation with the McKinney-Vento numbers, which, like I said, are in addition to the pit count numbers, is those numbers were taken in the fall. So we expect, on both sides of the coin there, that maybe by January 23rd, some of those people could have exited homelessness and found a place to be. Some of those people could have moved out of state, for all we know, but then also, the other side of that is, we don't know how many people could have moved into homelessness. So some of the people who, in September or August, when they filled out the thing saying, like, yes, I have an apartment, could have been evicted by January 23rd. So there's a little bit of a wash there. As we've seen all night, nothing's perfect, right? When we try to get these numbers, numbers going for it. Before I give you what our big ask for this year is, I will also send out a little thank you to two organizations. One is my own, so it's a self-think. To our staff at the Hays County Food Bank, and to the San Marcos Police Department, both organizations provided bags, one food, one emergency supplies that the surveyors could give out as they did the survey, which really helps facilitate those conversations and set that little place of trust to ask these questions, when you're also giving out bags with peanut butter and emergency blankets and stuff like that. So both of those organizations contributed a lot, and that went beyond San Marcos to the whole county, as we did the effort. But what we're really looking at, and this is something that as a board, we meet every year, to say, and last year, you may recall that we were here, our big ask was to ask for you to volunteer in the pit count, and we're not taking that off of you, we still want that. But the thing that we've really been concentrating a lot on this year, and we've met with, at the county level, and we have a roundtable that Jesse is part of to bring the municipalities into that conversation, is how we respond for emergencies, for this, the most vulnerable group of people that we have. What we find out every winter is that when the freeze comes, we're scrambling to tell people where they need to go. People call the food bank, people call the Homeless Coalition, people go onto our Facebook pages and say, where am I supposed to go? And we've had people, and I won't name the municipality, we've had people in city manager's office not know the answer to that question for their own city. We've had mayors say, I thought it was this, but now that I look it up, it's not. And we've had, at the county level, the same thing, where the sheriff has old information. So what we're asking for, from the county level and from all the municipality levels, is to help us coordinate a real plan that we know about way before the freezing weather is here, so that anyone would know. I know in my neighborhood, I live in Austin, I know where the shelter is. I've never needed the shelter. It's nowhere near freezing, is it? And yet I know where it is because it's communicated so often and so well. So thank you for, the city manager's office, for representing Kyle at the roundtable, and I hope for your participation going forward, to really make that a reality for this county that everybody knows. So if I call the sheriff, if I call Mayor Mitchell, if someone calls the food bank, they will know where their they will know where they're supposed to go in the case of a freeze, in the case of a flood, in the case of extreme heat. And that's our big push for this year, and I hope that you'll help us make that a reality. And if you have any questions, Nancy knows so much more about the pit count than I do, so we'll drag her back up to you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Young. Does anybody have any comments, questions? Customer's ready to go.
Thank you for presenting the data. It's a very tough issue, because it affects a lot of people. It's very disheartening to see, like, the kids are, you know, the ones affected by domestic violence, and there's no way their learning environment can be that conducive to them if they're sharing hotels or living in doubling up in families. You know, I always say, South Side Community Center, for people to go.
But it's far.
But it's far, right? Sometimes people can't get there, or they don't know if there's enough room. And I think about that, you know, like, when the freeze comes, like, what about... Because I see people in Austin living in tents, in camps, and, you know, it's awful. It's awful that this has, that stuff like this happens in our society, but I guess it's a complex socioeconomic thing. People lose their job, domestic violence.
Absolutely.
You would, either you're going to be abused, or you leave, and it seems like people choose to leave and fend...
Well, none of those are easy decisions.
Not an easy decision.
It's a heart-wrenching thing, and when we see these kids especially, and I do a lot of work in encampments and on the street because of the food bank.
Right.
And there are absolutely children in the encampments, in every city in this county.
So, like, when someone identifies as unsheltered, and they're living in cars, are, do they have, like, some way to identify them, so that if an officer or somebody runs into them, they know that that's an unsheltered person? I mean...
Yeah. Generally, if someone's living in their car, you can pretty much tell that the car looks like its home. You know, everything they own may be in the car. But we will say that one of the groups that's hardest to detect sometimes are the people that are living in their car. They're called the invisible homeless, because a lot of times, those are the people that are working. I know when I used to work with case managers in Harris County, where I came from, and with my work, you know, one of the things that case managers always said, "If you have to make a choice about what you keep, keep your car, because you can still get to work, you can still have, you need that mobility to do a lot of things." So some people made the choice. When it comes down to rent or a car payment, they made that decision. So it is difficult to find sometimes, again, for many reasons why people aren't going to identify as homeless when they're in that situation.
Right. You didn't share the numbers, but have more, have you been seeing more, I guess, cases, more kids, or more, has this been a problem that's growing in this county?
Again, I think it is, but just like with the school districts, if parents don't identify that they are experiencing any of those four categories that fall into the homeless category for students, then it really falls to, generally counselors and teachers start picking up on things that help follow up and do that. But yes, the numbers, again, the numbers are greater than what is reflected in a point in time count, or in a lot of ways, it's just, just know, because we know what's going on with housing. We know what's going on with the non-livable wage and jobs available to have, that people can afford to, just the cost of living and everything that's changing. So you can, it's a safe assumption to say that there are more people that are experiences, experiencing this and more going forward. It's not going to change for a while, and so I think especially as funding cuts are made that address housing vouchers and some of the things that help SNAP program, when that takes a hit, that, you know, that's a lifeline for people. And so that's where we look at communities, where some, in some ways, to get your faith communities involved in solutions, but the whole purpose of what Lisa was talking about, about the winter shelter, but also just coordinating resources. A system of response is greater than South Side, pointing people to South Side for a county this size. And so figuring out where does Kyle fit on the continuum of care? What part could you do as CDBG, your funds go forward? There may be some allowances for emergency, you know, grant, you know, those kinds of things that come with that, emergency shelter grant, whatever can be a part of that. So we're trying to give you the information. I know when y'all wrote the report for your CDBG, you worked with THN to get the raw data. We always make the raw data available to whoever wants that, because that really drills down into more specifics. We just gave you kind of, again, the overview of what some of the key significant points are, but we should all be troubled by this. You know, just because you don't have huge numbers within your city limits, it's a big, it's an issue, that people are going to come, you know, sometimes they end up with you, they're not yours, you know, you're not their zip code of residents, but they're there. And so how do you respond? We say this in every council meeting we've been to. How do you respond? What's the response? And it's not putting them on a bus necessarily and sending them out of town, although that can be a solution, when you know where they're going. But we're just asking, especially with the roundtables, and we're so glad that we have the support of your city manager, assistant city manager, for including your voice in the conversation. And so, yeah, I think we, it's something that has to be included in your conversation, for whatever level it is. It's what does that mean to us within our, in our municipality? Anything else?
All right. Anyone else? That was very thorough. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time.
All right. Next up is Agenda Item Number Six. Receive a report, hold a discussion, and provide staff direction on the sidewalk master plan.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Mike Trimble, Director of Transportation, Public Works. Pleased to bring forward the results of the sidewalk master plan. As you may recall, last February, council approved moving forward with the sidewalk master plan, and so that work's been happening over the past year. So we're here to provide the results, which will include an implementation plan associated with that as well. So with that, I'll turn it over to Will Hager with KCI.
Good evening, and thank you for having us here again tonight to present the results of your sidewalk master plan. As Mr. Trimble mentioned, we've been working at this for just over a year, and it's been very enlightening for us, and I think we've found some good, solid recommendations for you to consider going forward. So I believe we're all aware of this project and where we were aiming, so I'll try to hit the highlights for you and leave time for discussion or questions that you might have towards the end. Basically, I'd like to give a plan overview, kind of review and touch on some of the public and stakeholder engagement results that we received, cover the existing conditions, which will lead to our recommendations, those are policy and capital recommendations, and then looking at funding sources and possible next steps for you to consider. So first, we started by assessing your existing sidewalk network. Obviously, the city's growing at an incredible rate, and it's hard for those sidewalk networks to keep up with that level of growth. So we were able to identify gaps using your GIS data and in conversations with your professional staff. And then that led us, led us to trying to figure out what the priorities are for the community. Where do people want to walk? Where do they need to walk? And we set a scoring metric based on those priorities, and we'll review that here. So our overall schedule did start really last March in real effort in finding our initial findings. We were here in June of last year to hold some public stakeholder events, and through that period, we were also engaging with some online efforts as well. So last fall, we came to a solid final draft of the document and in conversations with your staff and leadership, we decided to modify those priorities a bit based on what we were hearing from the public. And that led to some revisions, which happened in spring of this year, and now you have the final report for your use. Those two public stakeholder engagements, one was held just right behind us here in City Hall, the other at Lehman High School. We were here during different times of day to hopefully meet and just talk with different segments of the community that might be available at different times. The virtual engagement was really a project-based website that had a project map and a survey. We had over 1,100 people visit the website and over 400 surveys, which really gave us some really solid input and direction from the community. Overall, we found that there was very strong support for sidewalks in general, a desire for those sidewalks to be separated from the roadway with some good buffers to make it more comfortable to walk. We also were able to identify some significant barriers for people that wanted to walk but felt like it wasn't safe or wasn't the best for their particular situation. We also were able to identify high-value destinations, and those included the Vibe Trail facilities that are in planning, but also schools and parks, and also other residential areas and commercial areas, which are growing rapidly. And we also understood that there was a desire to connect the major street corridors with neighborhood streets. It's not just that they want to drive somewhere to go for a jog, they want to walk from their door to where they would like to go. Here's a map of your existing conditions. You can see the existing sidewalks in kind of the brown, and we also wanted to understand this Vibe Trail network, which is expansive and very ambitious and a very great facility for you to undertake, but we wanted to see the entire pedestrian network, so we had a better understanding. And then we built off of that. So from here, we identified the sections that were missing, where are those gaps? And then where are those places where we might want to extend the network to reach high-value destinations? So these are those gaps mapped in GIS, and the interesting part was that you're growing so fast, this had to kind of evolve as we were, as we were working on the project. So that was fun to see, too. We also wanted to understand where safety issues may be a concern. So these are pedestrian-involved maps, or pedestrian-involved crashes across the city, and they're color-coded based on the severity of the injuries. So the black dots may not be an injury, but it was a close call, or it was impacted with a pedestrian, possible injuries all the way up to suspected serious injuries. And you can kind of see how those cluster in different parts of the community. Next, we wanted to understand level of traffic stress, and this is kind of a calculation based on the type of roadway, the speed of vehicles, and the likelihood of pedestrians being present. So one to four is the scoring. Level one is a fairly comfortable walking experience, four is uncomfortable and may need to be considered for an improved facility or a different type of facility. We also wanted to take a look at your policies and provide some direction on how to address pedestrian needs through your planning department, through your private investments, and updates to your subdivision regulations, and formalized traffic impact assessments may be one way to help you do that. Also, just updating street and sidewalk typical sections to make them more comfortable for users is also part of our recommendations. So next, we wanted to highlight these recommendations. Again, we wanted to address gaps in the network, create logical termini for these sections that are missing currently. And then these all led to a scoring and ranking and prioritization for these possible sidewalk projects. The scoring kind of breaks down in how we're seeing. It was designed, again, to reflect the community priorities. We gave 35 total points to safety, 20 total points to network connectivity. If it was addressing one of those gaps, we're connecting to a desired destination. And then the trip potential, a total of 45 points possible. It basically just improves connectivity across the community. And after scoring over 80-plus segments in this way, these are some of the top-scoring segments. A lot of these have duplicative scores, so, and we'll get into that in a little bit, but you can see some of the high-value targets here in terms of your sidewalk network, colors crossing, which, great news, it's already included in your CIP program. This particular segment is from Powell to Cromwell Drive, and we'll have a project snapshot on that in a little bit. But you probably recognize some of these roadways, obviously, they're typically heavy-vehicle roadways, carrying a lot of traffic. It makes sense in some ways, because the destinations that are along these routes, that you might see pedestrians along here, too. So we'll dive into each one of these, and there's much more in the full report to look at and to consider going forward, but we wanted to kind of show how these scores are reflected in each one of these top-scoring segments. So you can see here that this segment of colors crossing received points for crashes in the area, a higher level of traffic stress. It's an expansion of your network to some key destinations. You can see several schools on the western end of that map. We've also got some retail areas and parks in the area as well. So a pretty valuable segment to complete, based on our community understanding. Same here with Philomena Drive, from the Frontage Road to Brunton Creek Road. Again, we have schools in the area, it fills a gap, we have crashes, and we have a crash history here, and retail areas and trails planned in the facility as well. And you can all see that these scores are the same, too. So when you're considering where to put your money, where to put your dollars, you may want to have that consideration as well. You've got several that score very high, and then you'll have some that drop off at different points along the way. Again, this is Veterans, very similar, has a crash history, high level of traffic stress, this fills a gap, schools are present, parks are present, a lot of good things that this segment would connect. Here, we're dropping down a little bit, but we'll note that we still have an area with pedestrian crash history here. You can see in the aerial that there's a growing residential area in this area as well. So that might be an opportunity in the future to work with the private developer community to bring portions of these segments along, too, and then the city to partner and maybe reduce your municipal costs if possible. Here's Button Creek Road, from the Frontage Road to Lehman Road. Again, we have schools in this area, and no parks here, but retail areas and trails that help bolster its score as well. And then FM 150, this one was very interesting. It seemed in talking to the staff, who obviously have tons of local knowledge, that this was a little bit on the outskirts, but if you really take a step back, there is so much residential growth in this area and schools. So we kind of went back and forth on how this should be addressed, but it was also a high-value area. And then this is Old Highway 81, from East Center to the Frontage Road on the west side of I-35. We have schools here as well, higher crash history than some other segments, and a higher level of traffic stress. We also have some retail areas that come into the older part of town, near Center Street, so I think it's getting some points there as well. So part of our task was also to develop an overall per-mile cost estimate. We wanted to consider it based on a five-foot-wide sidewalk, which is a typical sidewalk. There may be some areas where you want something wider through a commercial area, but as a standard, typical section, we wanted to look at this dimension. We wanted to consider not just construction costs, but right-of-way utility relocation and stormwater costs as part of this, because we know that's an issue. It's not something we can ignore. Now, these costs may vary greatly from one segment to another, but we wanted to have this built into the estimated fee. We also wanted to look at CEI and design fees, because obviously, that's part of it. Again, some projects may be much more straightforward, where this fee is less or maybe not needed at all, but worst-case conservative approach, we wanted to account for it. It does not include specific curb ramps, crosswalk pavement markings, things like that, because that would be too much of a case-by-case basis, but this, just over a million-dollar figure, will be very helpful in terms of planning your budgets and your work plans on an annual basis. We also wanted to provide some funding strategies. Obviously, there's tons of grants. You're doing a lot locally with your tax increment reinvestment zones, but there's also newer programs like Safe Streets For All, which is a great grant program at the federal level, that has been very successful in funding specifically safety improvement projects, but that can include sidewalk development as well. I know that was very quick. I also know you've been here a long time, but I want to leave as much time for questions... questions as you might, might need.
Does anybody have any questions for the presenter? Comments?
Yeah, it seems like a pretty good plan. Saw some areas that were left off. I know that there were some segments of Stagecoach, but nothing further south. We've got a lot of walkers that are coming out of some of those communities, so just wondering, did we reach out to communities or just waited for public input?
Well, we held two in-person public events, and we tried to space them strategically, not just geographically, but time of day also. We also, if I might be able to go back and show you where our feedback came from. So if you look at the map here, each icon on the map portion of this slide shows at least one comment, and if it has a number on top of it, it, it's that number of comments for each location. So we did get pretty good geographic distribution. I think I see what you're saying, maybe towards the southern end of town, not quite as much, but I would also say that FM 150 specifically did rank very highly in our scoring.
Yeah, I could see that would go ahead.
And there's, there are additional segments, maybe scored lower, but are still included in the list.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about complete connectivity, and look, honestly, the southern part, just, I, I know they don't gauge or come out, but I know there's a need for sidewalks in those areas. It's great that everybody else came out and took the surveys and participated, but just driving around, I know there's other areas that we need to really identify and get connected. 150, yeah, you nailed it. I mean, 150 is really, really sorely needed. It's probably our number one right now. So, yeah, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Customers, here you go.
Thank you. I think it's a, it's a really nice network plan that you looked at here about the strategic points around the schools, well, and the parks where people want to arrive at a destination. The sidewalks definitely also benefit the people on bikes and the walkers, so, and there are safety for people that just want a safe way to walk around the city. Did you also look at, like, where we'll have new roundabouts, where the new roads will be built, so we don't have overlap, but hopefully they all tie in together at some point, so be able to not just get to where the new sidewalk is built, but even beyond that, with the new construction of the infrastructure that's coming in?
Yes, sir. We were made aware of the many capital projects that are underway and took those into account when we were looking at our gap network. So if there was a, a project obligated or planned for, we took that into consideration going forward.
Yeah, I, I appreciate all the, the thought that y'all put into it, to look at the impacts and the injuries. All of that is valuable, and I think that, you know, if we could do them all in one year, that'd be great, but I know these take time, and we can find the money and a lot of these small grants that you put in and in CIPs or new, new tourses. So thank you for letting us have this data and information.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? All right, thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right, next up is the consent agenda. Does anybody have any items they want to pull and deal with directly?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve consent agenda items seven through 15.
Second.
All right, motion by Councilmember Rizzo, seconded by Councilmember Harris, that we approve agenda items seven through 15. Is there discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero. Our next up is agenda item 17, Consider Approval of a Resolution Adopting the 2025 Parks Recreation and Open Space Master Plan. Six-zero, sorry. Cynthia, that's six-zero vote.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. The Comprehensive Parks Recreation and Open Space Master Plan is going to serve as a guiding document for parks and recreation for the next 10 years, and the implementation of this plan will bear projects that are also going to serve for decades to come. Today is the culmination of almost a year's worth of efforts and, and due diligence that includes support from you all, City Council, as well as our Parks and Recreation Board. It also includes an insurmountable amount of work from our consultant, Stantec, as well as the Parks and Recreation staff, but most importantly, an immense amount of support and commitment from the residents of Kyle, who showed up to pop-up events, town halls, focus groups, and at this time, I'd like to ask Paula Fernandez from Stantec to dive into the details of this plan, and our objective is to implement this plan in everything that we do, so that it's not just what I call, you know, bureaucratic blight or spots, a strategic plan on the shelf. Thank you, Paula.
City Council Mayor, thank you. I'll try to not take too long, I know it's been a long day, but it's a really exciting day as well. Is this, as David mentioned, this is a culmination about a year's worth of work, not only from us, but from your residents as well. Today, I'll present an overall view of the process to get to where we are today. We'll present a methodology of how we assess your current park system. I'll also share what we heard from the community, and then from there, share how, from what we learned from your existing conditions to what we heard from the community, we developed your Kyle Parks Recreation Master Plan. So we began a little bit over 10, 12 months, 10, 11 months ago, by just learning from you, learning where Kyle's system is now, and then having a heavy listening session. I remember seeing a couple of you on some of those engagement meetings. From there, we took everything that we learned and started developing your master plan and to today. So we use our five, five lenses to assess your park system. Our five-lens approach is called our needs assessment. Those five lenses include a demand-based assessment, which is our community engagement method, a standard-based assessment where we look at Kyle's park system and measure it to national standards. We use NRPA, which is a National Parks Martial Recreation Parks Association, and TPL, Trust for Public Land, which has specific benchmarks to measure where you should be based on your population size. So with that, we measure your budget, staffing, level of service, your facility. So where are you and where you should be? We also look at your resource base. So this is any nature-made, artificial resources, and what I also call your treasures, that add to your recreation. This could be rivers, greenways, drainage ways, even, even major thoroughfares like I-35. We also have, do an access-based assessment, which is how far are people from a park? We use a trust for public land measure, which measures that, which indicates that every single resident should be within a 10-minute walk to a park. And then we do equity-based assessment. In this, we include an environmental, socioeconomic, and health vulnerability matrix. So what we heard from the community, we have a total of over 4,000 data points of feedback. We had a total of 1,140 survey responses. We hosted public workshops, one on the east side, one on the west side. We hosted over eight pop-ups. We had staff interviews. We had a trails focus group meeting and a conservation focus group meeting. What we heard was that people, when we, when we asked people what they envisioned the future of Kyle Parks Recreation and Open Spaces, is a place that is inclusive, that has a lot of nature, trails, education spaces, activities for all ages, and accessible to them. When we heard what are the amenities that they see as a priority, the top priorities were trails, playgrounds, sports courts, soccer fields, and an aquatic center. When we asked what specific sports amenities, the top five priorities were indoor sports, fitness, wellness, youth programs, aquatic centers, arts and crafts. In addition to that, 76% of respondents vocalize a need for an indoor recreation center. I know there was a conversation about a senior center, so that would be considered one of that, but I think the overall was a need for a space that is an indoor facility. In the trails workshop, we focused specifically on identifying priority nodes, areas of connectivity that would connect people to places, specifically to other parks, facilities, or other main trail connections. Trails was one of the top responses as what people of residents of Kyle see as a priority. 80% of Kyle, of, of those responses were, mentioned trails as a priority. We also asked a funding question, going back to the conversation about trade-offs earlier today. We understand that we can't just have a plan and say there's, like, everything is, is available right now in, in this moment. We understand that there's trade-offs. So we wanted to make sure that we brought this question to your residents and ask, if we have, if we give you these four categories, what is the most, what is most important to you? So we gave them an envelope with 10 coins and asked them to distribute those coins based on their priorities. Top priority was to upgrade existing facilities over developing new parks. Second priority was to develop and improve trails, and third was improving, improving maintenance and operations. Overall, these were the, the seven key findings of the community engagement, was to improve existing facilities, improve trails, and add more connectivity, add more recreation programs and programming, focus on maintenance and operation, really look at the conservation of our ecosystem, funding options, and marketing and communication. Something that we also heard was that oftentimes residents don't know what is happening or what is available. So going to the other lens, which, the second lens, which is our standard-based assessment, we looked at every single one of your parks' facilities and identified your service area, meaning by, based on the size of each park, we identified how many residents of Brownsville were, were being serviced. So in yellow are the areas of Kyle, sorry, that are not being serviced right now. So this tells us where we should start looking at strategic locations for new park development. We also did an assessment of your existing inventory of facilities. In green, these are the facility types that are meeting or exceeding the NRPA standards. The ones are red, there is a gap there. So I'll bring this up in, in a little bit when we look into recommendations, because this is how we used, this is what we used to identify where to place and which facilities to add into your future recommendations. We also did an assessment of your parkland. You have a total gap of, looking at 1,000 acres per resident, you have a gap of 6.5. There's a gap in your budget of operations for your parks department of over $4 million, and a gap of staffing or 44 full-time employees. To identify this gap, we not only used the NRPA guidelines, but we also looked at peer cities of, of the similar size to Kyle, and peer cities to cities that Kyle is aspiring to be in the future. This is your environmental vulnerability. We see a higher vulnerability along I-35, so it's the higher vulnerabilities where we see the darker brown areas.
Do we, on, on that, on the vulnerability?
Yes.
Indices, do we have numbers on those? I mean, what does vulnerability mean?
Yes.
Compared to what?
Yes, good, thank you for mentioning that. So when we, so this map is a sum of a lot of data points, the ones here, you can see them on the side, so that include air quality, air pollution, flood zone, truck routes, water quality, contaminated land, hazardous waste, and heat islands. So all of that data of Kyle within those indices were summed up to identify your environmental vulnerabilities.
So you have numbers for all of these?
Yes, ma'am.
Of some kind that shows what the level of that ozone is?
Yes.
So lighting is not included in here, so light pollution would be something that could be possibly included in that. And do we have, I mean, there's some of these I don't think we have, superfund sites, chemical plants, hazardous waste, I mean, some heat islands? I'm not sure we even have a heat island in Kyle. Brownfield sites, I don't know that we've got brownfields, so, all right, did any of these actually have zeros?
All of these included data, whether if it was minimum, but all of this was data access available. We didn't include any data points that had no information, yes.
And keep in mind, we have the quarry just around the corner, which affects us. We have the, what do you call it, with more pavement going in, we're starting to complete that heat zone, right? We still have some green spaces, but we're starting to get hotter, but we also think about the jet stream, so as everything else develops around us, we're getting a lot of the pollution from other areas as well.
Yeah, that's kind of my question, is where, where are we getting these numbers from? You know, brownfields, we may have, what, one, the quarry? Heat islands are different from a general community heating. I don't know that we have any heat islands. I'm not saying any of this is inaccurate.
No, and if, and if.
I'm just saying, I just don't understand where the numbers come from.
And if it helps, you don't see a lot of brown. I've, have had, I've done this assessment in other cities, and it's all high vulnerability, right? So right now, what we mostly see is concentrated on I-35. Other than that, we see mostly low to medium environmental vulnerabilities. So it kind of, it kind of shows to your point, like, there's not a lot of data that would show a high environmental vulnerability, but just something to know and to, and to have in mind that, not to add to those areas that have their envi, higher environmental So this is your socioeconomic vulnerability. On the right, you'll see as well the data that we used, income household, education, people of color, employment. We used age under 19, age over 16, low life expectancy, homeownership, housing affordability, crime rate. And so in this area where we see the highest level of vulnerability is on the southern, eastern part of I-35, and then on the eastern side of I-35. Health vulnerabilities, again, data that we use is on the right, where we see the higher level of vulnerability is in that middle central part, so the darker blue side. Obviously, on the left, south, on the south-left part, we see, you don't see that much because it's undeveloped land. Park access, areas in red are the ones that have the higher park vulnerability, meaning areas that have the least access to parks. And this map shows just putting all of them together. So in red and orange are the areas where we see the medium to high areas of priority. So this information is, is good to see comprehensively, but also to look in isolation, right? Because if we look at the accessibility, it would show that on the east side, there's a higher access of parks, right? But a lot of those parks are undeveloped. But then if we also look at the socioeconomic mark, socioeconomic map, we see that the east side is the one with the highest level of, of vulnerability. So these maps are intended to be, to be used comprehensively, but at the same time to look at all of these lenses separately. So this is just kind of the, what, that this setup are, are based, right? And so we use this information to develop your parks' master plan. As David mentioned, this is your 10-year roadmap for your park system. So we took the information and the feedback from the community engagement to develop your vision, mission, goals, and objectives, and those framed the recommendation section. So we've identified your vision to be, we envision Kyle Parks to be a thriving, inclusive networks of parks and recreation where nature and community comes together to enhance quality of life and establish Kyle as a premier regional destination. Your mission statement is to be a premier and sustainable parks and recreation system that builds community and promotes health, conservation, and inclusivity for all. And the five goals, which is how we structure our recommendations, are a dynamic and inclusive community. So this goal encompasses how we get to your parks or to your facilities. So this talks about connectivity, this talks about trails, balance and connective system, this talks about your distribution of your parks, it talks about the quality of your parks, it also talks about programming, flourishing in nature. This is where we talk about your conservation, management, and preservation of your ecosystem. By Red and Prosperous Destination, this is where we talk about your park system as an economic development component of Kyle, and sustainable resources, more of an inward goal. This is how, this is more operations and maintenance, how do we service our park system? So the next few slides, I kind of give a brief overview of your recommendations. Each recommendation has an objective, and then each objective breaks down strategic action items and strategic, and strategies. So I have here, as I was mentioning, balance and connective system. This is where we talk about how do we get to parks, this is how we distribute a balanced system. This is how we do our work. This is where we talk about programming and elevating the experience of your park system. Dynamic and inclusive community is where we talk about how, the role that parks play in physical and mental health. This is where we talk about welcoming and safe environments as, in the sense of public space. This is where we talk about your access to programming and, and so that the programming that is offered is for all ages and all abilities. Flourishing nature and experience is where we talk about your conservation management and how do we educate and share the knowledge of how to preserve our ecosystem. This also includes your most recent conservation tiers and your most recent nature or plant list, as you mentioned earlier today. And then By Red and Prosperous Destination is where we talk about how do we make sure that we're placing Kyle Park System on a regional land as well? So the economic development component of parks. And lastly, your operations management, how to make, make sure that we set this park system for success for the next 10 years. So here's some, I'm going to show some of the recommendations. One of them is to amend and to edit or to improve your existing park classification. This includes, as I mentioned, your most current conservation tiers. So we added what the, what the conservation team has been, has developed as their conservation ecosystem tiers into their classification. We also visualized what do these recommendations look like in two, five different parks? So the first one that I have here is Kyle Vista Park. This is an undeveloped park that the, that you all own. And so we took from what we learned from the community and what we learned from the existing conditions, information, from the existing conditions analysis and visualized Kyle Park to be a park that has sports facilities, that has playground, playgrounds, that has walking loops, that has outdoor classrooms and pavilions. It also has a lot of conservation and nature areas. We want to make sure that all of the parks that we, that we visualize also offer a nature preservation component. So these are some perspectives from that, this, from, from this plan. The next one is Lineberger Park and Oso Oro. Oso Oro is this little square here on the left, on the right, south part. Lineberger Park currently has some, is currently used, but we kind of envision it to be still a park that has some programming and some amenities, but still maintain that nature preserve. So it has a couple, it has walking loops, it has a picnic area, some, some sport fields, some education center, educational boardwalk, playground. So this is a view from the educational boardwalk into the lake, opportunities for fishing. The next one is Four Seasons Farm. This one is a smaller park, but we still wanted to make sure that we offered a place to recreate for, this is really embedded into a neighborhood. So we, this one includes playgrounds, tot lots, so playgrounds for kids between two and five years. Again, continuing with the walking paths, which is something that we heard. And a lot of these, where they're near vibe trails, they connect to a vibe trail as well. This one is Seton Park and Trail. Again, another one that we still offered some programming, but mostly played with the conservation and nature preserve. So this one offers a lot of trails. It has a sports field, has a parkour, challenge court and fitness area. You can see a little bit of that here.
Can you go back to that?
Yes.
Back one side? I just haven't seen that concept before. That's where, I think Councilor Tobias was talking about that space a lot. Is that right? Am I looking at the right spot? That's the, the hospitals up here, but we, we own that land all that you're talking about? Is that just in the Plum Creek? Cause I mean, the Lake Kensington's just on the other side of that?
Yep.
So this would be a theoretical way to connect with the trail system?
Yeah.
From the front all the way back to Lake Kensington.
Yeah, into a vibe spot on the other side.
And then Seton Parkway, which is, you know, going, that's what's being, getting ready to break ground on that bridge to go right across from there also.
That's where that boardwalk was going to go across, right up on top, remember? And it leads to the vibe trail that leads to the Caraway Track.
The, what you're proposing here, you're, you're looking at existing city property, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so that, this doesn't involve us having to make purchases?
None of these include acquisitions. This is existing parkland.
And I guess you're saying that that field space where the parking lot is, which is also another very interesting idea of having a parking lot right there? That's all out of the floodplain?
Yes.
Some of what we own there is out of the floodplain on the other side?
You can see a little highlighted here on the bottom, that stormwater basin. So yes.
Yep.
And, and these are all, obviously conceptual. These are our take of approaching your, and, and all of these are undeveloped as well, right? So we wanted to make sure that we were addressing the, making sure that there's an equitable distribution of parks, but looking at your existing infrastructure. So this one, yeah, there you go.
Cause you could have that parking across the street, Mayor, and then you can go underneath the bridge to get to Kensington Park.
Yeah, but how about?
And still have, still have the other space there.
I like the idea of parking your bike up near Lowe's and be able to bike all the way to the back of the lake. Just, it's just interesting, and I know we're getting ready to design a bunch just on the opposite side, and the idea of connecting there is just interesting to me. I don't know, that, cause what you want with trail systems is length, you know?
Yeah, it's, it's really interesting how this interconnects. And even just adjacent to Academy, there's that development that would bring another vibe spot potentially, you know, maybe even a dog park area, plaza area, and then how this could potentially connect to Lake Kensington.
Right, so it might be interesting to the task force to want to just kind of consider this as you're making your plans and see if there might be a synergy there towards getting a little more for, getting on both sides of, of Dacey if possible.
And that is why I brought the conversation up of 1,500, that little triangle space, if that belongs to the city. I have always heard in the past that it did.
Yep.
And you can still utilize that piece of land for something. Cause I mean, it's overgrown brush, but it overlooks the, the, the seniors or the, the 1,500 Dacey. As mentioned to Mr. McKenney, we could eventually build a road that goes down, make it safer. But if we own that, that's, that's a good nine acres right there. I'm, I'm thinking we still, we still have that.
Is that, is, yeah, and that's, so you've got vibe going underneath Dacey there to, to connect so both, both sides could be connected? So you could connect all the way from I-35 to the, to the backside of Lake Kensington?
Make it a four mile track around like, like Zooker Park you do over there at Lake, like Austin High.
It's worth looking at, I don't know. I think.
Yeah. So a couple of perspectives of that concept. And then this is the last one, I believe this is Plum Creek Preserve, same concept, more of a nature preserve with some walking trails. This one, the only amenity that has there is a fitness area and then trailhead, but same, trying to connect to your existing trail system and making sure that there's a nature preserve component as well. Okay. We also looked at the rest of your park system, the developed and undeveloped. So this is just a snapshot of, we not only provided concepts and recommendations to some of, to these five parks, we also looked at all of your park system and did general observations, general recommendations that could be either small winds, low hanging fruit, some, either replacing a playground or some, small improvements that can be done. So these are for all of your parks. We did observations and recommendations for all of your existing parks. We also looked at your policy. We looked at your parkland dedication and provided some recommendations that aligned with what we heard throughout the engagement process and to the goal of Kyle's Park. So some of them were to make sure that any future development continues to connect to your sidewalk and trails, so kind of going back to the trails and the sidewalk conversation earlier, even some flexibilities to future development can develop about 25% into a floodplain. We want to make sure that when there's dedicated parkland, that you're not just getting land that you can't use. So finding that flexibility. We also recommending that you prioritize the dedication of parkland over collections of fees in lieu of. So we did a full assessment of your parkland dedication and provided recommendations. And this is what your implementation matrix looks like. So if I go back to where I showed the.
Can I, can I say something?
Yes.
So you said the dedication of parkland to land that we can actually use have, in the past, have we been getting parkland that is just floodplain, not adequate enough for, for the city to use?
No, it's just.
Cause I don't want just the leftover of a development.
Yes, exactly.
And, and we're calling that the parkland. So we've got to do better at that if that's what has occurred.
No, it's, it's just, that's not what is happening. That, that amendment to that policy is to, if there, the land that is being recommended has some floodplain, there are some trade offs where you can get some percentage of that floodplain that has, from that floodplain to be used. But you're not just getting the scraps, as you mentioned.
Well, I mean, if you're getting the floodplain, they can't develop in it. And then what are we going to do with it?
And so this is where you can see these types of interventions.
Because, I mean, we can't put in amenity that's Class A in a floodplain, cause that, that just ties our hands.
Right, so you wouldn't, you wouldn't just get scraps, so this.
Put in amenity where we need it in parts of the city, as you said, you know, maybe underserved, and not just get the, the floodplain from these developments.
Correct, so this protects you from that, but if there's also options to permit 25% of that dedication within a floodplain. So you're not just getting the scraps, you are getting developable land. But if there's floodplain area, you can also use it. It's being, going to be wasted, so you can also use that as well.
It's an added piece, so we, if you go back to the history of council, we've never, we've never made that trade off.
Our developments are not just doing that.
Oh, no, no, we, if you go back to the history of our votes, you can see that we don't give up, you know, good parkland dedication and let them say it's floodplain, you know what I mean? So, yeah.
So all of the policy recommendations that we make are making sure that you get the best out of your, the parkland. One of those, the first one that I showed was to make sure that you're not just getting fees in lieu of, and that's, this ensures that as your city grows, you're making sure that you have parks in areas of growth, right? Oftentimes, we see that developers prefer to give you a fee instead of developing parkland or dedicating. So all of these recommendations are ensuring that you get the best and the most of your parkland.
At the top of my head, you know, there's two parks and I say, why can't we put this there? It's a floodplain, you can't do that. You're, it's just not going to work, so.
And Councilor Ruzo, to your point, like, this, this would flip that ratio and say, hey, we want the bulk of that being developable?
A better land.
But most of our, like, our most precious natural resources are within the floodplain.
Right.
So we did want to allocate a percentage of that to, to say there's still some value.
I get that, all right.
Yeah. Okay. And so this is a snapshot of what the implementation matrix looks like. It kind of goes back to touching what we heard from the community engagement. It identifies action items, responsible parties, cost, timeframe, and it also identifies what are some of these recommendations that are easy wins. Some of these that are wheezy wins are more, they're less cost, they're easier to implement and less cost driven. So it could be fostering partnerships, some programs, so things that the city can enact right now. So we listed all, well, what, of all of the recommendations, which ones are the easy wins? We also provided a funding matrix. So we have a, our team has a funding specialist that looks at what we recommended and enlists all the funding opportunities that the city can seek out to make sure that this is not just a list of dreams and then we're just faced with how do we pay for it? We provided a funding matrix that offers funding sources for Brownfields, events, programming, historical sites, parks, trades and sidewalks. And it basically gives the city a roadmap to where to look for these grants, who are the agencies, what is the goal, what are the eligibility's and when to submit for these grants. Yeah, that's it, what I have for today. Do you have any other questions, any thoughts?
Design of the Kyle Vista Park, of how you're, you came up with that concept. You got possible swimming pool, splash pad, but also you've got a multi-use fields there, whether they could be soccer fields or maybe basketball on the opposite side. So that's been an area that has been with the city for many years. It's kind of neat to see, like, really what a concept would look like over there right by Chavo.
Yes, sir. And what Paula alluded to was that we looked at that deficit chart that we showed you guys earlier, and so we're like, what are the greatest needs for the city of Kyle to, to optimize all of those lenses for needs, whether it be environmental and health and wellness, and all of those desires that came by national standards, also by community input? And so they strategically placed those within those undeveloped concepts. And so the moment you start plugging those soccer fields in or those trails in, you start seeing those deficit gaps shrink.
All right, anyone else?
I have several.
Yeah, Councilor Harris.
I appreciate that your recommendation is that we use our native plants list on this. You know, I think that that should be a policy citywide. I would like to see water conservation items included in, in our park planning. I'd like to see a priority on trees for temperature reduction and shade free walkability and usability. I would like to include light pollution in one of the environmental factors as it has a direct effect on health and nature. And trees can help mitigate that as well. I'd like to prioritize restrooms. Our parks are not as usable without the restrooms. We do, one of the slides was a little inaccurate in that it didn't, it showed us no community gardens, but we do have a very nice community garden. That should be corrected on that. And the funding, I'm not sure, I know you aren't either, Paula, on what's going to happen with the funding, state or federal, for any of the parks. You know, the, the National Parks funding has essentially disappeared. I, I don't know that, that, those are going to be options, but we do need to look at them. And that was, those were my basic questions.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. In regard to all those conservation initiatives, we agree. In fact, as we did our, some due diligence and worked with the Conservation Focus Group, the recommendation that comes out of the master plan is we probably need conservation, a smaller conservation master plan eventually. Really drill down on what's needed. In regard to the discrepancy with community garden, that's something we caught too. We're going to correct that within our chart and before, that, that's going to be part of the adoption, is what I'm saying.
And I believe it was asking for 1.6 and you had, you had half of that.
We had nine. For the community garden, it showed us with nine, so.
I'll double check that the master plan.
Yeah.
And it's on, on this slide.
And I am concerned about the vulnerability factors. I kind of like to know what the levels were on those, you know, like, if, it goes into, we have a brownfield that fits in there, but do we have more than one that was included in that? Do we have those, is there a matrix?
Yes.
That we, we could get?
I think it should show where the values.
I would love to see that, thank you.
Councilor Ruzo.
Yeah, I'd really like the Lineberger Park and Oso Oro concept is really cool. I, I think it's a resource that we've had that we've not really utilized. So to see this coming to fruition is really nice. I've seen people try to navigate that and try to go out there, use some of it, just, it's just not, the overgrowth and everything, it's just not feasible. So to see this in front of us is great. The other thing I like is the, I mean, that Lineberger Lake is just, looks really good, that concept. But I also like the Four Seasons Farms, the playscape, everything, the water features, I think looks really good. Look, honestly, it looks like we did our due diligence and we're planning something really nice for the residents there. So thank, thank your team for doing that, appreciate it.
Additional comments?
I'll save them for the next two.
Okay, well, we do have some parks items coming up, so thank you all very much.
Recommendation for.
An action item. All right, motion to approve? Motion by the mayor, second by. Motion by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Tobias, that we approved it in item 17. It's the discussion on the motion. Councilmember Harris, I would, I know you did make some specific recommendations. Is there something you want to?
I would like to have lighting, light pollution included in the environmental risk factors and an emphasis on trees and assurance that the parks have adequate restaurants.
Thank you. All right, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion carries seven to zero. Next up is agenda item 18, consider approval of task order one with Dunaway Associates LLC to conduct preliminary design services for Steeplechase and Lake Kyle Park in an amount not to exceed $305,580. Ms. True Love.
Good evening, Rosie True Love, Director of Administrative Services. For this item, we're going to provide an overview of the project summary, the scope and timeline, and the options and recommendations that we have before you. The firm that we've engaged with for this, this particular project is Dunaway Associates from the rotation list to review our existing park amenities and to recommend a program for implementation of park improvements at Steeplechase and Lake Kyle Park. Planning efforts for both of these parks will proceed simultaneously to accept, to accelerate the overall timeline. The scope included for this, for both parks, will be conducting a site analysis, reviewing the Pro's master plan data, identifying needed improvements, conceptual renderings, conducting public engagement, and providing an opinion of probable construction costs. The final preliminary design concept will also be provided, and the timeline will be five to eight months. We have Chris Escoto here, who can help provide any details on the work that will be done for this particular project. And with that, I would offer it for approval for this task order.
Just on the, identify need improvements, making sure we add the ADA component, component to that, please? So just to add all our features there.
Absolutely. That's going to be an important component to that.
Sounds good. And with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Have a question. Yep, you've got the main, mayor's not here.
Oh, I didn't even notice he was gone, I'm sorry.
Question?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
The preliminary design services, what are we, what are we specifically looking at? Because I haven't seen consideration yet for the ballfields, for the basketball courts. And I'd like to see shaded structures so that people can actually use them in the summertime. But I also haven't seen, you know, what is going to be the, what are we, what are we going to do with the, with the parks, with the baseball fields? Because those are important to me, the baseball fields.
And that's a great point. That's exactly what this is going to get you. So it's going to get you a design, it's going to get you feedback, it's going to get all that various input that you're exactly providing right now. Our consultant team is going to be conducting public engagement, they're going to be conducting site analysis, and overall redesigning of those spaces. So we're going to be, the goal for this is to improve the park from, you know, from ground up. So that is redoing the ballfields, adding basketball courts, adding more ballfields. That's all going to be part of that feedback that we're going to have to engage in ultimately. So I know there's existing assets. That's not to say that those can get reimagined. So this is going to start from scratch. What are we reimagining the space to be? There are fixed acts, assets that I would say, so like Steeplechase as an example, we're currently redoing the playground. So the playground is a fixed footprint, but we have vibe. You have all these other amenities on site, so ultimately, we're trying to improve the parks.
So do you need six to eight months to design, or can you speed this up with three months of community engagement, get this locked down, and start showing us, like, some ideas, some concepts, or, because it's, is there a way to move this a little faster?
Yeah, we've, six to eight months, it's, it's a pretty normal for that timeline. However, there are ways that we can fast track some of these components with the Pro's master plan that we just approved. We do have a lot of community feedback. So that could be things that we will implement into this and maybe have a shorter public engagement window for us to be able to get there.
Okay, yeah, and, and that's, that's what I was looking at is, like, when are we going to see the, the, the aspects and the elements of the, of the fields, right? Because people need to use those.
Absolutely.
You know, and we just can't have a playground. Got to have better, higher standard, better product. That, that came out of the visioning workshop, so I'm, I'm looking for the, the better product out there in the fields.
Couldn't agree with you more.
Okay. And let's remove that exercise piece at the lake, because I don't know why it's there.
For people to exercise.
No, it's, it's a bad, it's a bad thing.
All right, to recap, motion to approve, agenda item 18, made by Councilmember Rizzo, seconded by myself. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. All right, next up is agenda item 19, consider approval of task order one with Freese and Nichols to conduct preliminary design services for Greg Clark and Waterleaf Park in an amount not to exceed $382,023. Ms. True Love.
So this is the same functional project that we talked about, but for two different parks with Freese and Nichols. The parks that we are looking at for this particular task order assignment are Greg Clark Park and Waterleaf Park. It's the same scope and timeline that we generally have for this work, and staff offers this for approval of the task order. And Mr. Escoto is here to help answer any technical questions.
Questions?
Motions?
I just have the same comments.
Same comments.
Same comments about the fields.
So my question, question is, does the designer have someone on staff that can work with the Texas Historical Commission? Because before we move forward, he's making sure we're getting our permitting, we're submitting everything that's, we need to submit with them, because it's going to be important.
Yes, we'll, we'll have to assess to see if there's any historical components. Is there a particular park they're referring to?
Anything we do on that park, we have to go through Texas Historical Commission.
You're talking about the next item.
Oh, I thought, I thought we were doing that one.
It's the next one.
Okay, my bad, my bad. Sorry. Oh, that's right.
Motions?
Motion, motion, motion approved, sorry. Now let's go to 20.
All right, motion made by Mayor-
Been a long night. My bad.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim, seconded by Councilmember Kenny, that we approved it in item 19. It's the discussion on the motion.
Yeah, Chris, my comments would be the same as the last one.
Noted, thank you.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion carries seven to zero. Next up, agenda item 20, consider approval of task order number one with Park Hill Smith and Cooper for design services to support improvements at Mary Kyle Hartsen Park and the Krug Activity Center, including a restroom facility, ornamental fountain, and feasibility study in an amount not to exceed $196,750. I said that wrong.
Sorry, I was late, late focus on that.
We'll go with it. This is for Mary Kyle Hartsen Park and the Krug Activity Center. At Mary Kyle Hartsen Park, we'll be talking about full facility design of the restroom and design options for the ornamental, the ornamental fountain, and a feasibility study for Krug.
Rosie, before you keep going, I'm going to go ahead and bring up Councilmember Rizzo's item, because it's related to this. Consider impossible action to direct city manager and staff to review public restroom availability hours and policies at city parks. So that'll be a function of this conversation, but go ahead, thank you.
Okay. For Mary Kyle Hartsen, we're looking at a timeline of five to eight months to include the elements on the slide, specifically full architectural and engineering design for a new permanent restroom, and preliminary design options for improving the existing fountain, including historic site compliance review with Hayes County and the Texas Historical Commission. For the Krug Activity Center, we'll be assessing the facility structure and site constraints, reviewing space use, ADA and infrastructure, historical elements, and exploring reprogramming options for community needs. Both of these have a timeline of five to eight months, and we recommend approval.
So this is or is not contemplating the inside of Krug Activity Center?
When you say contemplating, are you referring to reimagining what that space could be?
Yeah, I mean, it's design services. It's a substantial amount, so I'm assuming that it, that they're going to look at the whole space.
Yeah, so there's three, three pieces to this. So you have the restroom facility, you have the fountain, and then the feasibility study for the Krug Center. So we are going to be looking at the possibilities of what that space could be, whether it's repurposing it for different city function, but that is going to be part of that assessment.
Okay. See if I have any questions?
Just making sure that we follow the steps, make sure we don't try to take any short cuts on this. It's a historic part of our town, and we're, we're going to definitely do our due diligence on this, making sure that we're doing it right. Getting plenty of public feedback on it with the design would be great as well. On the design itself, we're going to, we're going to start from scratch, right? We're not, there was something on there of it being fabricated somewhere else or something? Or is that?
Those are going to be options that are going to be brought forward once we get to those design stages, whether it's going to be, you know, brand new architecture, or it's going to be starting with a prefabricated restroom for us to be able to build from. But either or, those options will be-
I just want to make sure that it matches the surroundings.
Absolutely.
Kind of what the, the big push will be for, making sure that it's not invasive to the area.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you, Chris.
Councilmember Tobias.
All right, we're on the toilets subject, finally. It's been brought up many times. So would one of the concept be where, with a Krug building, that you would just basically take out those restrooms from the building itself and build a separate bathroom? Or are we going to build an outdoor style bathroom like we have at Lake Kyle and still have the restrooms in the building itself? Because there are restrooms there.
Correct.
There are bathrooms that people can use, but there are people that put homemade signs there. I don't know who gave authorization for that, that pulls people away to where we have to have a trailer. Now, we've had some residents complain that those trailers that we use are dirty, they smell, of course, people urinating there and use other stuff. They're not sanitized and so forth. So there are bathrooms that are downtown, they're just not being able to be utilized, correct?
So you're absolutely correct that there are bathrooms inside the Krug facility. This will not eliminate the bathrooms at the Krug facility. This will designate certain bathrooms, like the Lake Kyle example, where you have dedicated restroom facility outside. The site, there is a footprint that's been identified, or that's going to be located. If you're familiar with the holiday lighting, which I'm sure you are, it's where typically where the castle goes, that is the area there that we've identified as a placement of that bathroom facility, which is just on the other side of the pavilion, or the gazebo, outdoor gazebo. To answer your second question on the bathrooms regarding the usage during special events, it, it has been something that the bathrooms are available whenever that facility is open. So we do have, like, market days as an example. We do incorporate market days where the bathrooms are open to, to the public, but we do also supplement, just because of the need of the event, the crowd that it draws, that we incorporate those exterior outdoor TDS restrooms that are ADA compliant.
Then why does it say on the signage out there, no public restrooms?
I'll have to look into that further, and we can get you an answer for that, but from a standpoint of-
Where there are market days, there's a makeshift sign that says, you know, no public restrooms. I'd like to know who authorized those signs.
We'll have to see if that's something that perhaps has been, being added by the user of that, the users of that space, whether it's CAS, or I'm not, I'm not really sure, but we, we can get you the answer for sure.
That, those restrooms have traditionally or historically been very inadequate for public use. They're very small, they stop up, it's old plumbing, they stop up very easily. So having the, them available for the general public in a busy, busy time like market days in the past has been very problematic.
Oh, I know they were open at the last public, market days, there was signs on the doors saying that they were there mainly for handicap.
Yeah, for handicaps.
People with kids and stuff like that.
Yeah.
Were encouraging others to use the trailers, but it was, the sign that was there on the window was something that CAS uses when they use their private events. Unfortunately, it stayed up, and so people might have gotten the misconception that it, it was closed to the public. But they actually put those, that sign up when they have their private events, so people were not coming into their private events.
Right.
That's what they were doing. It wasn't meticulous to where we're going to just close it. It wasn't the city doing it, just know that.
But it's-
But they do do it during their private events.
Yeah.
And that's why it was up there.
And it's generally for handicapped during market days.
Yeah, but, but-
But it is small.
Even with the new bathrooms coming in, if we build those, we're still, when we have big events, we'll still have to bring out the trailers, and these are really nice trailers. They're expensive. I mean, they're in high demand. They're air-conditioned, they're huge. Now, if, as a city, we can probably do better to keep them clean throughout the day, throughout the events, something we can look at, but, you know, they're, they've got great ventilation, they're, they're actually built really, really good. I mean, there's a lot of cities that want these trailers, and we've been lucky to be able to use them for our events, because usually they're in high demand, they're gone.
So when we have to, of course, anything that we touch downtown, we got to get with everybody's historical commission.
Absolutely.
Has there been already conversation about where they would actually be placed?
The restroom?
Yes.
Yes, we have, and we have made initial connection with both the Texas Historical Commission and then started talking with, with Hayes County as well. And that is going to be part of that process for us to be able to present and keep them up to date with the progress of this, and ultimately get their approval on the location.
On the location and the size and everything else.
The facade, everything entirely.
Because if we, if we go with, like we say, large events, and we only have one stall or two stalls, we're going to be in the same situation, like everybody's saying over here, it's going to be inadequate for a large amount of people. So, you know, of course, you know, I think the main thing is providing another restroom, whether it's outside, and then ask, eventually, we're going to be needing to add the trailers is, is going to be probably the, the, the overall goal.
Yeah. And we could talk with our consultant team as far as scaling appropriately for these type of events, so letting them know, hey, we have so many events, here's attendance that we foresee, what is that ratio for us to have proper restroom? So that'll be part of that analysis.
Because Lake Kyle has two. They have the one where you come out of the office and you go in there, but then you also have the ones on the outside.
But you're, but you're dealing with historical site now, so you've got to be minimal invasive in that site. So building a big bathroom is not-
That's a tricky part of it, behind it all.
That's not going to be feasible for it.
We want this, but then we have our, also, we have our handcuffs on something else.
Yeah, you're, we're going to have to build, build a minimal site bathroom, because of the historic site, be less invasive in there, because you don't want it to dominate the site. And that's something that I don't think the Texas Historical Commission would approve if we build something really, really large out there. So you got, you got to be real careful in what you're putting out there.
Yeah, I understand, but I, I just don't want us to get in a situation to where we have a small bathroom, and you're going to still have lines for people to use it, and they're going to need to go into the Krug building.
And that's-
And that's, you know, and we're going to be, we're going to be in that situation there. Because look at the, look at, we all go to the, the Christmas deal, and there's thousands of people there, even the Easter egg or the Halloween, and, you know, you're going to have limited amount of toilets there. And so it's just, we're going to have to find that balance.
Texas Historical Commission, they're going to preserve the site over everything else.
Can I, can I jump in? Sorry, Dave.
Yeah, it's okay.
Yeah, I mean, they're making, they're making good points. This is the, you know, why I brought this up. I got, I also got the letter from a resident that we're maybe not in ADA compliance here. My concern is on Sundays, like, the days that are not a market day where you don't have the trailer and those doors are closed, what, what are we doing about that? You know, because obviously, people that are at the park still need to use the restroom somehow, washing their hands, or maybe a mom has to change a kid diaper or something. My, my concern is there, and I know we've had the, this lingering problem of, do we put a bathroom here? I think at one point, we thought about it, got pushed back. So what are we doing to stay, make sure we are in ADA compliance? Because the market days, that's a different story. I'm talking about your regular Sunday, your regular Saturday, and if that Krug building is closed, what do you tell someone down there? Go to Milt's Barbecue or just hold it?
Well, hang on, to be clear, isn't that what we're doing here?
Yeah, that's-
So we're, we're, we're voting to start a design for restroom to resolve these issues So we're, we're voting to start a design for restroom to resolve these issues while also working with the Historical Commission.
Yeah, but are we currently in, in out-of-compliance stage? Like, are we in an out-of-compliance stage on a, on a normal weekend down there?
I, I wouldn't say we're out of compliance, there's no law that requires there to be restrooms in general. When we have these major events, we do have the ADA trailer now, fortunately, through our TDS contract. I see there's three tiers, there's one conversation on the daily usage of the park, which is why we're looking into restroom within the site constraints and honoring the historic nature of the park. So we want to design, like, you know, as much as we can within those constraints, and maximize that footprint for daily use. Another reason for the location was, we want to be as close to the playground for the littles. The other piece of that was, because of those constraints, we'll still need to supplement restrooms, you know, nice trailer restrooms that are climate-controlled during major events, because it's not typical that you see, like, the entire town descend upon a small park like Mary Kyle Hartsen, it's beloved, it's popular, it's a Lone Star Legacy Park because of that. And so, you know, this might be something for the foreseeable future. However, we are reimagining what we're going to use the Krug for. Dr. Harris alluded to them being inadequate for that type of usage right now, I, I would agree with that, but part of the reimagining could be, hey, how can we, pardon the word, but, you know, harden up these restrooms and make them more ADA compliant, and also vandal-resistant if we're going to have more open access to them right now? One, bad act of vandalism, or even, even just some excessive usage of the restrooms could create some major plumbing issues, but all that's going to be comprehensive as part of this contract, and things that we're going to look at.
So my other agenda item was if we could look at, I, I think right now, we operate 24 hours at all the parks, restrooms are open?
Well, technically, the parks have hours.
But we have a curfew, right?
We do have a curfew. There's only one restroom right now within our system that has magnetic locks on it, that's the Cool Springs restroom, that coincides with park hours. Something we could look into, we've already been discussing, was making, adding more magnetic strikes, automated locking on the restrooms in our system. We haven't had huge acts of vandalism, fortunately, that doesn't mean it couldn't happen. We could be proactive and look into that. It wouldn't be a, a big expense, we can cover it with an operational cost. If, you know, that's the direction we want to go.
Yeah, that's something I was going to kind of allude to, because as we're investing more in these premier parks, we don't want them just damaged overnight because they're open 24 hours. There should be like a curfew on them. Lighting toilet paper in a restroom is, that's one of the vandalism acts that happened, right, at Waterleaf. So, you know, it's, it costs staff, time, cleanup, we don't have to have those things happen, so. That, that was my second item, was could we look at making it more vandal, vandal-proof since we have a curfew in the parks anyhow? Wouldn't that make sense to have automatic locks on them?
Yeah, I mean, we, we try to be proactive.
I see no problem with that.
Yeah, I thought that that was part of our original contract with the, the ones that had done our first group of restrooms, that they have, they can be, the locks can be controlled by the staff remotely.
Yeah, that's not uncommon for public restrooms, I wasn't here for the original conversation on-
So ours, we just have one of those?
You can, just at Cool Springs, but they're easy to retrofit. Again, we weren't part of those early conversations, but-
What I'm saying is, I thought that was part of our original contract.
It's easy for us to go back and do that.
I, I think it's just, it creates an opportunity, like, people hanging around longer, maybe drinking in the restroom, doing whatever, so, because we have them open, and they know that they're open 24 hours.
No doubt, thank you.
So, just kind of match our curfew codes.
Yeah, we could look into that.
I can make that in a two-part motion if you want. All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve agenda item number twenty, and to direct staff to explore the feasibility of magnetic locks that coincide with a park hours, and unless it's required to come back to council to install those.
Second.
Motion by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Harris, is their discussion, so we shouldn't have to hear back from you unless there's some kind of budget amendment, and that can just be done. Can, can y'all send us a note whenever you've kind of got a timeline for when that's going to be, so that we can-
Absolutely. We'll also add it on the weekly report.
But open back up at an appropriate hour.
At eight o'clock, some people start running at six in the morning, so.
Right, it'll be, it'll be during park hours.
I just want to add that, as we're growing our park system, our trail systems, we're probably going to start as a city looking at a, maybe a park ranger to keep an eye on vandalism, the trails, things like that. I don't know if that's something that we've considered, because we're getting ready to put a lot of infrastructure in, parks, lots of parks, lots of trails. I mean, might be something we need to start considering. I mean, it's just a thought.